I'm showing it's four oh seven. Are we good to start?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to call to order the Effingham County Board of Commissioners' work session. It's four oh seven on June eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. Tim, did you get a chance to talk with Steve?
Yes, and so if you want to move the item number six to the top of the agenda, this was not a formal presentation, but mostly a kind of an open discussion.
Right.
I could provide some, some information on this. Number six is the discussion of private roads within the county, or more precisely, the discussion of a process by which a private road can get taken over for county maintenance. And so, and we've kind of dealt with this over the years on particular projects, particularly more recently in cases where developments would stop during the Great Recession, and then all of a sudden, when the economy turned around, pick up again. How do we get those roads that were built ten years ago into current standards? And we just kind of came up with a process by which to, it goes through an inspection process. They take care of necessary repairs and move on. But what we're dealing with now is the cases where folks have roads that were originally intended to be handed over to the county, but because of financial reasons, the developer never did or never brought them up to standards to do so. So, how do we get from point A to point B, where we have a road that currently does not meet standards, to get it to a point where the county would take over its maintenance?
Before we get too deep into it, Mr. DeSalvo, did I say that correctly, Carl? He's here tonight. Maybe we could get that side of things?
Sure.
And get a kind of a baseline of what he's experienced as a homeowner, you know, and what the trials and tribulations, if you will, that he's been against. A few minutes at the mic, if you will.
All right. Thank you very much for discussing this and bringing it up. I am Carl DeSalvo, and I live on Coldbrook Court, off of Goshen Road. Back in two thousand and five, that plat was signed off and approved by the county. But nowhere on this plat does it say that it's a private road at all. The way, this has been brought up back in two thousand and twelve and two thousand and thirteen, when our subdivision started coming in front of those who were on the board then. And it was kind of laughed at because we had some petitions signed and everything like that. They kind of literally sat up there and laughed at us and didn't want to hear us. But we are now struggling with a road that is very in poor condition, is breaking up in little pieces. Literally, when I cut the grass and I get into the drainage ditch area, I have chunks of the road laying in my drainage ditch. That's how bad it's coming down the street. Now, the road's about eight hundred feet long, and it goes into a cul-de-sac and turns back up. There's only about eight to ten houses on that street because we all own about five to ten acres of land, so we're far apart. We don't have a homeowners association or anything like that. So, we went to closing. No one ever told us this was a private road. And at the time, the road was okay. But now, it's starting to buckle. It's starting to fall apart, and we're just kind of at a loss. We don't know what to do. We, you know, we don't know what to do about it. I don't, yeah, so the plat was, plat was signed off and approved. And then, the road's crumbling. There's been situations where people in the subdivision have tried to sell their house. And the mortgage company is giving a very high interest rate because of the road. The one guy at the top of the road sold his house, but he had to cut through the woods to get up to Coldbrook Circle. And that's the only way the VA would loan him the money, was to do that. So, he literally cut a path, a driveway through the woods, and left the dirt so he could get up onto a good road. Then, the house two doors down from him sold, and they were asking whatever price it was. But then, when the sellers came, when the sellers were selling the house, the buyers came along. The buyers wound up having to get a higher interest rate on the house because of the road, and the sellers had to drop down their price because of that. Now, I'm not going to stay there for the rest of my life. We're probably there for about another five to eight years. And I plan on selling too, and I don't want to be hit the same way, you know, everyone else has been hit like that. I don't think it's fair, you know, we pay taxes like everyone else does. That gets a road, you know, paved and fixed, and we're not, we don't get that. So, I know it's probably back in two thousand and thirteen when we were here discussing this, that it was brought up that if our road was not going to be paved and not being taken care of, we should be backpaid our taxes differences because of what other people paid that do get the road fixed.
But what mistake did we make as a county?
Well, this is what I'm trying to figure out. The one thing is, I saw some, I saw one of the ordinances, seven, seven point one point eighteen, appendix B. I don't know if that's still, I don't know if this was still, if this was in effect in two thousand and five when a plat was taken, when I signed off by the commissioners. Because if it was, it says on here that the developer was supposed to turn in a maintenance agreement to you guys. And that the private street or road may be dedicated and/or accepted by the county for public street purpose. And then, it also says on here that it's supposed to be noted as a private street on the plat, which it's not. So, I'm trying to get to the bottom of this, to find out if this was still in effect in two thousand and five. Now, it has, it has a date on here that it was changed in two thousand and six. So, I don't know. I'm digging in this.
What we're trying to do, Mr. Carl, is try to find a way forward for not only you guys, but other people too, that may be in the same circumstances that you are. Not really go back and see if we can drill down whose fault or anything like that. A lot of things happened in those years, as you know, economic downturn. A lot of people are having a hard time in a lot of different ways, so it's kind of really hard to rebuild that. But I think Tim has some, some great suggestions. You know, I appreciate you coming tonight because I wanted to hear your side of the story. Mainly what some of the pitfalls that you're, you're up against when you're selling a home, some of the issues other people are having in the same type of neighborhood. Because if you guys are having that there, chances are somebody else is going to have some of the same issues. So, what we're trying to do is get something, you know, that's palatable and would work for everybody.
Yeah. Well, we've been trying to do this since two thousand and twelve.
Yes, sir.
It's been brought up, and then it dies.
It has.
It's brought up and died.
And I brought it up before.
And we're to the point now where like, right, okay, what?
It's not an easy fix.
Something has to be done. No, it's not.
You know, you can't like do a new ordinance that all private roads are going to be paved. It would break the county, you know, so, you know, what do, what do we do? How do we possibly share in the cost? How do we, what do we do to move forward, you know?
Yeah. Well, it was brought up too, back in two thousand and thirteen, when we stood in front of everybody else, that the plat was approved. The way that they said the road was supposed to go down was approved by the county. And then, they realized that the ash does not stick to the pavement.
Was it ever just dirt? Was it always an ash road?
What mine are saying is, it's ash underneath.
Did the county put ash on it, or the developer?
Developer.
The developer. He did it per the county. The developer. He did it per the county ordinance at that time.
But the territory was never turned over to the county?
He never turned it over to the county. He never turned it over. So, now we're stuck. Now, we can't go back to the developer because he's out of business. He's gone. He's gone. So, we can't do that route.
The developer doesn't live there anymore?
Yes, he does.
He still is there?
We disagree this with them.
Every day.
Yeah.
All of rigafarms, they had never been turned over. When we first came, when I first came in in two thousand and twelve, there was a lot of developments that hadn't been turned over, and we made a, actually made a push to try to take over some of these roads, and a rig of farms was one of them, but the developer, he was still around, but he dissolved. That company was gone. Unfortunately, those.
A lot of those situations, we didn't have to go redo, yeah, they were in decent shape, so it wasn't a.
Yeah, I've ridden that road, and that road is, is gone. I mean, there's really, you have to go like ten miles an hour, go beat your truck to death, and I was in my truck today, so.
But we are looking at other roads that we're looking at doing, they're not this bad of shape. They have, but they have an HOA, and they're willing to put in some money to.
Yeah, we don't have that.
Yeah.
We don't have the HOA. So, I mean, it was put down the way the county said to do it, and then they said back in two thousand and thirteen that we realize those two don't adhere to one another, which is what's causing the buckling.
And there's probably two different avenues to that. There's one saying, okay, if you want a private road, you can do X, but if you want to make it a county road, it has to be brought up to county standards. There is, so that's two different things. Correct me if I'm wrong on that. So, it would have, even no matter what they did then, in order to bring the roads into the county, they would have to bring it up to standard at that time.
But how do we do that today?
Well, if you don't mind, we'll let Tim continue on. Maybe we could find a solution. That's what I'd love to do for you guys.
Yeah, we'd like to see it.
Perfect, but.
Because it's getting much worse. It's getting really bad.
We'll go.
The developer lives on your street also.
He drives the whole entire road. I followed his wife down the road the other day, and she's dodging all the, all the bumps, just like I was. I'm following right behind her and zigzagging all through the road.
Can you, can you read that ordinance number one more time?
It was seven point one point eighteen, appendix B.
Okay, thank you.
Private access roads and private streets.
Okay.
Now. Yeah, but see, I'm trying to find it, so it looks like this, but no one can give me this.
It's probably been changed.
It probably has, but I don't know what it read back in.
Yes, we should have some record.
Just in, if you look it up, add it in Muni code, in the top left-hand corner, you can go back to years, like versions. Just try that. It'll, it'll take you to the actual version, you know, from.
Well, because I even had the county clerk looking for it. I said, I'm trying to find this.
Yeah, it's not easy to.
And she can't find it either. I'm just like.
Some, some of what you mentioned does seem like it's post oh six or five or whatever, but.
Yeah, yeah, I don't know.
And I, and if I recall, I mean, some of this, I think it was even more recent, where it was, the reason that it's worded that way is because of these situations, right, of your road. And so, I, I think some of this came in after the fact because folks were coming into us and saying, hey, I had no idea that that was a private road when I moved on to it. So, we, we made, we changed the ordinance to make that a requirement.
So, you're saying this is probably after two thousand and five?
I believe, and I've asked the, I've asked our development services to, to find that out for me right now, when, when, when that current ordinance was put into effect.
Because that's what I would have, you know.
Yeah. For towns, districts, where, you know, we kind of finance.
But.
For part of it anyway.
But I can say, I mean, I, obviously, I, I don't recall ever having a road standard for a, for a publicly maintained road that had ash over, I'm sorry, had asphalt over ash. So, my guess is that might have been a, a proved standard for a private road, which, which did not have as stringent requirements that, that public roads do, that require developers to have for public roads. I will, you know, I mean, one, one of the things that I think if we look at this, and, and yes, we got a quote, I think that was, that was pretty high on this, but I think that was an asphalt quote.
Yeah, a couple hundred thousand, I believe.
Yeah, and I don't know if I'd recommend that for this road, because if, what I would probably recommend for this road is, which would be a substantial improvement over what you have, would be to put it on the chip seal network that we have with the county. And we've been having a little bit better luck on the ash roads with that, and it's also a lot less expensive, but I have to get.
What do they do with that? How's that?
So.
Just go right over the ash then?
Reformulation of the ash?
Nope, no, no, that's, that's the most expensive process. This is, most of our ash roads that we have right now in the county, we maintain by a, by layers of chip seal, which is, which is not as expensive as asphalt. And we're, we maintain them on a more regular basis than we do asphalt. Asphalt, you don't have to go out there every ten years, where this might be every, every four or five years. But it's also a lot less, less expensive. And part of the reason is because ash, certain ash roads, depending on the condition of the ash, if you put asphalt on top of it, the base will fail. And so, you just, you know, you're, you're spending too much money to fix a problem that, that a simple chip seal surface treatment on the road, I mean, in a year, it almost looks like an asphalt, you know, maybe completely adequate for it. So, the quote that we got for the road was about two hundred thousand dollars or something to that effect. But I'm pretty sure that that was for full asphalt. So, I want to try and get an idea as if we were to put this on the chip seal program, which is, a lot of our neighborhood roads are on it, not, not full asphalt, whether that would be substantially less than something that, you know, could be, you know, that we could do a cost share on. And I'm going to tell you why, why we mention cost share is because, you know, and Commissioner Deloach will, you know, he's got, his district takes up half of the geographic, geographically, the county. A lot of his roads are, he's got a lot of roads that are either ash or dirt. And so, what we do for one, we generally have to do for all. And so, you know, the, it kind of keeps, it starts a process where everyone's going to, we're going to be required to surface, surface everybody's roads, right? So, if we create a process by which we're, and this is what I was discussing with Commissioner Burdette, you don't need a homeowners association. We, the county can kind of create a quasi homeowners association on a road. It's called a special service tax district, where, like, let's say we determine that this road would cost eighty thousand dollars to surface street to get it up to a condition where then the county can then take it over. Then we could create an arrangement where the residents on that road, if they had a petition, could agree to be included in this special tax district, where it, yes, it would be an annual millage until the dollar value is paid off, but then the county would then, you know, A, do the work, which would save money, and B, potentially contribute financially towards a portion of that total cost. That's one way to go about it. That's not obviously what's currently in our ordinance right now. Currently in our ordinance right now is you have to get the road to county standards, and then we agree to take it over. But that doesn't work in your situation, right? So.
Tim, in that case, would, would he need, so we did a share, and this all worked out. Would he need a hundred percent of the homeowners there voting on that, or would?
That is entirely up to the board. I think the, the, technically, a special tax district can be created without a petition, right? We've, we've done them last year in the industrial areas, right? And so, but, you know, I was, I would recommend that you get buy-in because you're, you're essentially get, you know, agreeing to provide an additional tax to the residents.
It wouldn't be unheard of either.
What that percentage is, I don't know.
I've seen, my daughter lives down in Tampa, and they do special tax districts just for repaving.
Right.
In her neighborhood. They don't get a salary.
And I don't think it would require a hundred percent, because you're not going to, you know, it only takes one to totally kill the whole thing.
Yeah, it's true.
You know.
They're going to have a majority, and it's going to improve everybody's
Yeah.
property value.
I mean, maybe a super maj, two thirds, two thirds of the residents or something like that.
We do need an avenue to address this, because this isn't the first time something like this has come up.
And it's going to keep coming up.
Right.
Because we're not probably going to let it rest. We want it, we need it fixed. So, let me add that chip seal. Is that the whole road, or is that section, is that spots that are bad?
No, 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 that's the entire road.
That's the entire.
And so, the way the chip seal works is they'll go in there and they'll kind of grade it to a surface, level it. They put about three layers of, of gra, of gravel, at, you know, thicker gravel on bottom, then a layer of liquid asphalt, and then a thinner, smaller pebble gravel, a layer of asphalt, and then a third. And so, again, it's, it's not as expensive as asphalt, but for roads that don't get a tremendous amount of traffic, it's completely adequate. But once we do it that first time, then the county would then be responsible for, for maintaining it.
You would take it over then?
Right.
But he, you know, him be the ones who give us a quote on that?
Yeah.
Is the right of way in place? I mean, do we have, is it a normal size?
Yeah, it's, it's, you know, it's a subdivision, so it's got adequate right of ways, so.
Who owns that sixty feet right now?
Good question.
That's a really good question. I don't know.
I mean, I, yeah. Somebody has to own it, right?
Yeah. It might be the, the developer might still own it if, you know, I know who owns it because they tried to, the developer owns it because they tried to deed it over to us.
Oh, oh, yeah, yeah.
You're exactly right.
He wouldn't have a problem deeding that over, you think?
You don't even have to say the name, and I bet I can know the answer.
So, the asphalt was two hundred thousand?
The asphalt quote, I believe, was two hundred thousand. I can, let, let me get some refresh quotes on this for some options.
Yeah.
And then, if it's, I mean, we could, you know, potentially, if we can come up with a procedure for this, you know, we could use this as a test for folks on.
That's what I said back in two thousand and thirteen, when they realized it wasn't adhering, and they said we'd have to find out what we're, I said, use our road as a test, but we don't care as long as it's smooth.
Right. Yeah, because if, if we wanted to do asphalt on that road, we'd have to dig up all the ash, mix it with an emulsion, lay it down, and then put it on there, which would probably
Wasn't quite that much.
Four times as much.
She ballparked it between a hundred and thirty and a hundred and seventy thousand.
For the asphalt? All right, we probably need to move on.
When was that dated? I mean, asphalt's going up considerably.
It's recent. It was May fifteenth.
Okay.
Now, it may have went up since. That was based on a recent bid. It was not quoted. It was just based on a recent bid she saw.
And what, what we're seeing too is that, once we put several of this chip seal treatments on it, you know, you end up having a pretty thick base of that material after like two treatments, and we're a lot more comfortable putting asphalt on that than, you know, a single layer and then as, and then ash, so.
So, if I have a, my driveway's a quarter of a mile long. Theoretically, I could do a special tax district, and the county could finance a nice driveway for me.
That is the concern, yeah. So.
That's what we don't want.
That's right. I mean, you know what I'm saying? I mean, that's what we have to, I was being sarcastic.
I know.
You could, you could have, or it had to be multiple homeowners or something like that to get around something like that.
Yeah.
We, we'd have to put some language to protect situations like that, where we're not paving people's driveway, or we don't have a developer who kind of comes in with new construction houses and uses this mechanism to get us to pave their new roads, to pay fifty percent for their new roads. So, I, I think we've got to come up with some language to protect situations like that. I just don't know what they are right now.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
So, we'll just see what.
Well, the next step will be getting an estimate, an actual estimate on, on the chip seal versus the asphalt. And we can take a look at our share, take a look at how we create this little pilot type of a program, and go from there.
Okay.
Hopefully, get something done this time.
Well, I appreciate your time.
Thank you very much.
Yep.
So, that would take up number six. Steve, are you leading discussion today on everything else?
Sure.
You want to prioritize, or?
Yeah.
You guys run out of time, which, let you pick and choose?
So, the accessory dwelling unit request is something that you talked about. You said you guys heard that. We're going to put something together and take a look at it. So, do you want to concentrate on accessory dwelling units being accessory to the primary house, right? You want them upstairs, downstairs, or anywhere in between, single-story, two-story? So, a lot of them are over garages, things like that?
Yeah.
Do you want them to be accessory structures that are now dwellings, depending on the zone they're in? Is that something you want to look at too, maybe?
I don't, I don't follow you.
So, I'm going to get a, you know, six hundred square foot handy house, and I'm going to plumb it and put electricity in it. Is that an accessory structure? Is that an ADU? I'd rather stay away from that, but I don't know what.
Lee, well, the, it looked like there was a sample ordinance you provided.
Yes.
And I looked at it, and I thought it kind of addressed some of those, RVs, do not, you know, things like that.
Right, okay. So, the sample was, was a good, yeah, okay, all right, good. Is there anything else that you just want to stay away from, or something you really want to migrate to? So, I'm, so coming from two areas that had no accessory dwelling unit or AD unit ordinance, and we implemented them both, it was an answer to a lot, not everything, but a lot of some approaches to adding more housing to the housing stock, for sure, in a, in a fairly quickly way of doing it.
Well, yeah, I, I would, I would say that it could only be occupied by the non-primary resident as long as the primary resident was in the primary residence. Does that make sense?
Right.
You know, you couldn't, you couldn't rent two, two dwellings.
Right, just the one.
It could be a single carriage house.
And a thought on that, I mean, could we, could we make it like a requirement for, for homestead? So, so that if the person
Oh, interesting.
Has an approved homestead exemption on the property, then you know they're actually living there.
Yeah, then you know they're living there, yeah. That's, that's a good.
That, you know, they're not.
Yeah, if we can legally tie it to that, I mean, certainly can.
I mean, it's just a thought. I don't.
Yeah, it is a thought. We'll look into it. That's a good idea, yeah. Then we know, and we don't have to keep leases on hand and all that kind of stuff.
Yeah.
Okay.
I don't know. One other thing, and I don't know, and this would, something down the road, I'm sure Lee would have to look at. Because I had this issue in, in my district where it was a, like a five-acre AR one parcel, and they had built their accessory structure, but, you know, they were, there was a claim of financial difficulty. They were wanting to rezone to AR two and subdivide. If we could just, you know, clarify in there that no, you know, having a secondary structure is not justification for an argument for rezoning or subdivision. I don't know how, I don't know how you word that, or, does that make sense, Lee? Kind of sort of?
Yeah, we.
Something to give us, you know.
We've actually, I think we've found some language on that, which is going to be satisfactory.
Just notify, you know, let them know upfront that you build a second dwelling, you may be stuck with two dwellings forever.
Forever, that's right, yeah, okay.
The risk you take.
Okay, that good? Okay. I'm going to let somebody else talk about pools.
This is me at the East End Planner, too. So, we're making some small adjustments to the pool ordinance. Since we uploaded the packet last, there has been some changes that were done at the planning board level. So, one of the things is, in the very first paragraph where it says, "No such private swimming pool shall be allowed", we're actually going to change that to being "No such private swimming pool shall be permitted by Development Services", to, you know, kind of further the, you need a permit for your pool. to, you know, kind of further the, you need a permit for your pool. We have clarified where, that we're measuring from water's edge when we come to do our setbacks. We have clarified that no swimming pools are allowed in the front yard. If you're gonna have a private pool that's used for swimming lessons, you have to adhere more to the community pool standards than just a private swimming pool because you'll have people coming to the property and taking those swimming lessons.
That'd be like a separate permit that they would have to get.
They would have to get a business license application. So the state of Georgia, um, they already do the inspections and stuff whenever you apply for swimming pool license or for lessons. They're involved and they do inspections on the property and that kind of stuff. Um, so we would just, you know, have to have confirmation that you went through your state and then you'll get a home occupation business license. And then we also clarified that the, a fence is required around any swimming pool that is four foot, a minimum of four foot with a self-latching gate. And there has been discussion about regulating above-ground pools. So that is something that the board would like to start regulating, we will definitely, uh, take that into consideration.
What would be the purpose of that, Sam, if you wanted to do?
Safety for the kids.
Safety, you, we ever had some problems with above-the-ground pools?
Um, not to my knowledge, but that doesn't mean that it couldn't be coming up. So we did put in there in that first paragraph, um, that swimming pools that are less than forty-eight inches in height are supposed to be regulated as well according to the standards because the swimming pool, international, international pool. What is it, international swimming pool? That one, international swimming pool and spa code. Um, they say that a above-ground pool has to have, if they have is removable, um.
That's where they have regs.
Then it's.
Is that what the state of Georgia, I know the state of Georgia uses a code and they've got their own set of regs.
Yes, sir, that's the international.
Sometimes people don't use that, I don't think we use it anymore, I think we used to. And then we morphed into kind of doing our own thing, Chatham County the same way, they're doing their, they have their own. I think we piggybacked on them at some point.
So whenever our inspectors actually go out, they still adhere to that and the IRC for their pool regulations.
For the state or for, for the local?
Uh, that would be a state, that's actually interna- uh, a national code.
There's something in here that I've always wondered. The, um, are we, are you still talking about that? Sorry, go ahead.
No, I'm just, for clarification, if there is something about what we actually inspect by as far as the codes. Um, it's ordinances, it's, we do still go by the, uh, pool and spa and IRC.
And that's what we've adopted?
Yes, that's, uh, that's still what the DCA.
That's adopted by the state, right?
Yeah, that's what the DCA.
But right now, we're not looking at regulating above-ground pools, I, I'd want some clarification, I mean, there's, there's these little pools you can get three foot deep, you just inflate, it's twelve foot, fill it up with water and it just floats up, but it's only three foot deep. I know a bunch of people just pop those up and throw them out at the end of the summer, I mean, we don't require fencing and everything for that, I don't think, I mean, that's.
Yeah, that, that, I don't think that's what.
That is not what we're referring to.
Some sort.
Well, I, I've never, and I've, I've always wondered in here, the setback is ten feet, but it includes concrete paving, but you cannot put a pool in and pave concrete up pretty close to the property line. Yeah. That's what I mean, so I think it, I think it should be like ten foot to the water's edge, that's where your pool, that's the pool, right?
Yes, sir, and that's what we clarified in.
Is that clarified?
The location section of it, yes, sir.
Yeah, well, it's still, it still shows.
No, but I think.
Okay, I see where you're adding water's edge, so you covered that, I'm sorry. But it says including any walks and pavers areas.
But didn't they correct that since?
I think it's just kind of in the wording there.
Yes, sir, the, the including walks and paving was scratched at the planning board, for clarification, that was strictly water's edge.
I've just always wondered why that was in there.
Me, me personally, I'm fine with beefing up the safety portion, but I don't want to do overreach, you know, where we don't need to. It would just create a more work.
I still, I'm still not positive that three point forty-one point three is exactly worded.
Can you, can you, are you talking about for the, uh?
Well, like the pavers and the concrete, it's still a little ambiguous because it does mention water's edge, but it says to include walks and paved areas.
But I, I think what Samantha was saying that what's not included in your packet is the corrections that were made at the planning board. So can you read that out with the corrections?
Um, it says it may not be loc- it may not be located closer than ten feet from water's edge to any property line of the property which it is located on and ten foot from any dwelling.
So they cleaned it up.
Okay, so that is cleaned up, perfect. Sorry.
No, I saw the same thing.
Yeah, yeah, it was just ambiguous.
Any other questions about that one?
I think the ten feet from a structure may be code anyway for people trying to jump into it.
It also has the angle of repose, which is, um, referenced a lot in the code.
Okay.
But the ten foot usually is bigger, which is why we want the ten foot.
Gotcha.
And then we also have ponds, um, which has, once again, been changed a little bit since what was uploaded, um. Jonathan, do you want to help me with this one?
Which one?
Ponds. So the biggest things that I changed, um, was the location of the pond from any existing, um, building. So proposed excavations shall not be nearer than a hundred foot to any school, church dwelling or right of way. The location of the pond, of the existing pond may not be within fifty foot from any proposed school, church dwelling or right of way. So that will be to, you know, make sure there's more distance between the actual house and the pools, I mean, the ponds. Um, so they're not, you know, within ten foot of them. Um, and Jonathan has made some changes as well.
Yeah. So one of the things we're just clarifying is the, uh, I'm Jonathan Holm County Engineer, um, is the, uh, side slope to be a maximum of three to one, um, and that's not really a change per se. And then one of the other things was is this thir- or three points seventeen A, we're gonna move that up and kind of consolidate, um, the construction standards, um, that way there's not, you know, duplicate information. Um, some of the other things that might not have quite gotten here, and it's something that I would recommend, um, is if it's a wet pool, uh, or a wet, um, excuse me, pond, um, that there'll be a minimum of five feet in depth and that helps with mosquitoes and bacteria and fungal and all that kind of stuff. So kind of giving some design guidelines, um, to create that.
When you say wet, does that mean it continuously holds water?
Correct, yeah, because you can have dry ponds, um, that aren't meant to retain water. So if there's going to be a permanent pool, that it'd be at least five feet minimum. Um, and then I think that was, that was really about it, um, as far as the, the technical. And with that, I guess it would also make your ponds have a minimum size, right? Because if there's a three to one slope and then there's a five foot depth, so.
Alright, is there anything in addition that you guys would like to, um, suggest on changes of these? And both of these, you will have a clean copy coming to you, um, sometime in July. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, before we vote on this, we'll have plenty of time to look at the final draft before we vote, correct?
Correct, yes, sir.
Okay, and Lee, you'll get a copy as well?
I should, yes, sir.
Okay.
Thank you, Sam.
Hello, everybody, uh, Chelsea Fernold, Senior Planner. Um, so the new community tree management ordinance, um, it cultivates and preserves the rural nature of Effingham County. Uh, the ordinance provides a comprehensive list of definitions, including terms such as, uh, arborist, Effingham County Tree, Critical Root Zone, Landmark Tree, Tree Protection Zone, and Vegetation Management. Uh, it addresses the need for an annual vegetation management schedule, uh, from utility companies for trees within the Effingham County right of way, uh, and the maintenance standards for that management. Excuse me, um, it specifically speaks to having a tree management plan for developments that apply for land disturbing activity permits or preliminary plat, uh, requiring that a tree inventory for forest areas, a grouping of trees with overlapping canopies and individual or isolated trees greater than eighteen inches, uh, be identified. Uh, the Community Tree Management Ordinance holds all standards to the American National Standards Institute Technical Standards and the International Society of Arbor Culture Best Management Practices. Um, prohibiting certain activities within the tree protection zone, um, such as a vehicle, uh, or equipment parking, storage or traffic, um, placement of temporary or permanent structures and equipment maintenance. Uh, furthermore, this ordinance provides the guidelines for tree maintenance standards and when necessary, tree removal. Um, it coincides with current inspections needed, um, and conducted for preliminary plat review, site plan review, land disturbing activity and development plan review. Uh, community tree management is the way to protect our tree canopy and isolated trees in order to preserve the rural Effingham County feel, um, as our county continues to grow. So that is community tree management, um, can, the county engineer does have a copy of the ordinance as well. I'm sorry, attorney.
There's a lot of them.
They both have one.
Chelsea, how do we come up with, do we write this from scratch, do we borrow it from another municipality or?
Um, a little bit of, a little bit of both, um, looking at other municipalities and what they do and then also, um, knowing, uh, what the constituents, um, when they come up and saying, hey, you know, this is what's important to us, kind of, you know, incorporating that as well.
There's so much information, and this could be a workshop on its own.
Yes, thank you.
Yeah.
It is, and it might be something we'd want to invite some developers to.
Yeah, that wouldn't be a bad idea.
Yeah, absolutely, it definitely is a lot of information to take in, um, so please take your time with it.
There's nine, I'm like, well, this is brand new.
Yes, it is, so please, uh, please take your time with it and, and.
Well done.
Can we share this with some of the developers?
Absolutely, please do.
Legal issue with that or, I mean, just to get feedback?
Public information.
Yeah, absolutely, please do, I.
A good idea.
Yeah, I would definitely love any feedback on it to make it better too. Um, and as you guys read, if you have any questions, please feel free to, um, ask. And if there's information you find that you want in it, I'll definitely add that too.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We've got about five minutes, Steve.
Yep, so I'm gonna kill four of it and give a minute of it to Jonathan. No, so Jonathan has found some conflicts, um, within the flood ordinance and stormwater, so he's gonna talk about those, thank you, Jonathan.
Very nice, okay, so yeah, Jonathan Holm County Engineer again. Um, so Article Three, Section thirty-four eighty-four, um, and then I'm also gonna sneak in eighty-three, um, as well. What I'm wanting to do is remove some of the conflicts like Steve was talking about between our ordinance and then also the, uh, local stormwater, uh, design guide that we have here as a county as a policy. Um, the conflict is with allowing, um, developers to, developers and engineers to raise the floodplain by one foot, um, and that's in our ordinance currently. Um, what's in our, uh, local stormwater design manual is saying that there's no rise, um, either upstream or downstream. And so because there's a conflict, the more conservative is what we've been doing, um, as a policy for, for, for a long time. And so, anyway, it's gotten brought up to me, um, by engineers who I'm working with and they've asked the question like, hey, your ordinance says this, but your local design manual says this, so, you know, we're, we've always gone by the more conservative between the two. So this text, um, would just simply remove, you know, more than one foot. Um, it'd be, uh, more than one foot at any point in the community under eighty-four. And then under Section thirty-four eighty-three, under Bullet Two, I would also want to scratch through and do a similar thing, and it's the different flood, uh, zones, there's AE and then there's also A. Um, and they're both, uh, special flood, flood hazard, uh, zones. So anyway, it's really not a change in policy, it's just clarification, um, in the floodplain. So, um, I'm wanting to bring this, I think, to the board for you guys to, to vote on, um, I think the July second.
That's a lot less information than the tree ordinance.
Yeah, it is, so hopefully this one's pretty straightforward, but.
So this is something that's been in practice, this is just clarifying and codifying it.
That's right, um, and, and I didn't give you all this, but in the, uh, local, uh, stormwater design manual, page thirteen, uh, four point three point eight, um, says it can, uh, all development activities shall be designed to maintain the flooding capacity of the flood hazard area unless it can demonstrate that there is no increase either upstream or downstream in the base flood elevation after proposed improvements. So, anyway, so that's where I'm at, any questions, I guess, or? Concerns, no?
Okay, that's good, thank you.
Yep, we're going to break before.
Yeah, you guys want to take five before five, it'd be true to our time at five o'clock. So this is during the work session and we'll return at five o'clock, thank you. Good evening, everyone. It's five o'clock. I want to welcome you to the Effingham County Board of Commissioners' regular meeting. We're gonna call it to order now. It is Tuesday, June eighteenth, twenty-twenty-four, at currently five oh one P M. We'll begin with roll call. Mr. Floyd.
Here.
Mr. Burdette, I'm here. Mr. Corbett is absent. Mr. Deloach.
Here.
And Mr. Kiefer.
Here.
So we have a quorum. And next, we'll, I'd like everyone to please rise for the invocation and remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
Please bow your heads. Dear Lord, thank you for allowing us to gather here this evening. Please be with us as we try to do your will, Lord. Help us move the county forward. And at this time, I'd really like to ask you to be with Laura Devisher's family. There was a tragic accident here in Springfield yesterday. Laura was a shining light in our community, and she will be dearly missed. And I ask that you please be with the other young men and their families as they're going through this as well. Father, also like to ask you to be with Mr. Quinn Saxon's family. His wife is part of our county family, and he had a tragic accident this past Sunday. So please be with them, Lord. Help them during their grieving times, and please comfort them. We ask that you please be with our state, local, and federal officials. Please be with them as they make tough decisions. And dear Lord, we thank you for our many blessings that we're so fortunate to have, Lord. And we know that all good things come through you. In your name we pray, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Deloach. Appreciate that prayer. Item five will be agenda approval. It's consideration of the resolution to approve tonight's agenda. Are there any corrections or additions?
None that I'm aware of, sir.
Okay, do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
Make a motion to approve as presented.
Second.
That's a motion by Commissioner Floyd, a second by Commissioner Kiefer. Item six are gonna be the minutes, the consider. All in favor, say aye. And I knew that this guy's, we don't do this all the time. Anybody opposed, no? Hearing no noes, we have our agenda. Item six is a consideration to approve the June fourth, twenty-twenty-four, regular meeting minutes. Any corrections or anything to those minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve as presented.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Deloach and a second by Commissioner Floyd. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, no? Hearing no noes, the minutes are approved. Number, item seven's gonna be public comments. Again, I want to welcome everyone here tonight that's in person and may be watching online or listening online. If you wish to make any comments regarding an agenda item, please step up to the mic, state your name clearly, and please try to keep your comments to two or three minutes if possible, so that everyone will have a chance to share, and we'll have time to share. Correspondence or documents from this meeting are located in the Clerk's office and on the Board of Commissioners' website. Item nine is our consent agenda. And this includes routine items, which are usually no discussion. If a need arises for discussion or debate, the item can be moved to the appropriate area of the agenda to be discussed. So if any, no changes there, I'll begin reading. Number one is a consideration to approve Amendment Three to the agreement with City of Guyton for the use of an inmate work detail. Number two is consideration to approve Amendment Three of the agreement between the City of Poole and Effingham County for the use of an inmate work detail. Item three is consideration to approve Amendment One for the agreement with the City of Port Wentworth for the use of an inmate work detail. Item four is consideration to approve Amendment Three for the agreement with the City of Rincon to use it for use of an inmate work detail. Item five is consideration to approve Amendment Three to the agreement with the City of Springfield for the use of an inmate work detail. Item six, consideration to approve, to accept a grant award from GMA for the local emergency management performance grants, EMPG program, and authorize the purchase of a boat and equipment for EMA and fire rescue. Number seven is consideration to approve, to renew the Fire Protection Services Agreement with the City of Guyton. Number eight is consideration to approve the reappointment of Linda McDaniel to the Department of Family and Children's Services, DFCS Board. And finally, number nine, consideration to approve, to reappoint Rebecca Boston to the Coastal Regional Commission Council as non-public representative. And that is our consent agenda. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
So that is a motion to approve by Mr. Deloach and a second by Mr. Floyd. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, no? Hearing no noes, the consent agenda items are approved. That moves us right along to unfinished business. Item ten. And these items contain areas from our previous agenda. There's two of them, they're both ordinances. Number one is consideration to approve the second reading of an ordinance to amend Part Two, Official Code Appendix C, Article Two, Definitions of the Effingham County Code of Ordinances. The first reading was approved on June fourth, twenty-twenty-four. So this is the second reading. I didn't know if we need discussion, or is there a motion for approval?
I'll make a motion to approve the second reading.
Second.
That is motion to approve by Mr. Deloach, second by Mr. Kiefer. All in favor, say aye. Hearing no, all opposed, no? Hearing no noes, it passes with no opposition. The second one is consideration to approve the second reading also of an ordinance to amend Part Two, Official Code Appendix B, subdivisions of the Effingham County Code of Ordinances. First reading was approved on six four, twenty-twenty-four as well. It's also a second reading, or do I have a motion?
Make a motion to approve second reading.
I'll second that.
Motion to approve by Mr. Kiefer, second by Mr. Floyd. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, no? Hearing no noes, it passes with no opposition. That brings us on to new business. Number one is a consideration to approve, to post a placard at the Clayo Community Center Building located at five forty-five Fair Street in honor of Frank Young Junior. This is Miss, Madam Clerk.
Yes, Mr. Chairman and Board Members. This is an item that was brought forward to Commissioner Deloach from a constituent regarding an individual who was killed at the age of nineteen in the Vietnam War. The request is to allow for a placard to be posted on the building at the Clayo Community Center. Commissioner Deloach, is there anything you'd like to add?
No, that covers it. Couple members of the VFW group contacted me. And so I'll, I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Deloach, second by Commissioner Floyd. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, no? Hearing no noes, it passes with no opposition. I think it's a great idea. Number two in new business will be with Mr. Neil Groover. Consideration to approve a payment to refund taxes for a property located on Old Augusta Road, map number four seven seven, parcel number fourteen, fourteen A in the fifth district.
Yes. This is concerning Mr. Hargray's property out on Old Augusta Road. He is, believes there is an error on his property dealing with property taxes. So the method we used to appraise this property was highest and best use of the property. Mr. Hargray failed to appeal during his forty-five day notice in twenty-twenty-three. Because of that, upon recommendation from our attorney, Chris Rouse, the Board of Assessors could not make any changes because he failed to make an appeal during that time. So our recommendation is to deny the tax refund request. And I'm gonna turn it over to Chris now, let him kind of talk about the case law.
Just real briefly. You know, the legislature's provided a statutory process for people to follow if they disagree with a evaluation.
Sir, could you state your name?
Oh, I'm sorry, Chris Rouse for the, for the board. But the legislature's provided this statutory process for people to follow if they disagree with the valuation. It's pretty simple. It's used by a lot of people in the county. And in this case, that procedure wasn't followed. The appeal wasn't filed. There's a certain amount of time you have, and that wasn't done in this case. And so, at least from the, you know, the standpoint of a lawyer, it looks like the taxpayer in this case is kind of trying to do an end run around the Georgia, Georgia legislature's provided procedure for dealing with this. I've talked to Lee Newberry about it. There's a Georgia Supreme Court case that kind of specifically talks about just that effort to sort of, again, do an end run around that Georgia statute. And that case, in that case, the Supreme Court kind of talked about, that's, that's not what the procedure for coming before the county commission is for. That's for dealing with significant issues that kind of affect the whole process that a Board of Assessors is using. And that's not what we have here. We just have somebody that believes that different factors should be looked at, that the specific facts of this case weren't evaluated properly. And that's what the, the sort of original regular appeal procedures for, and that simply wasn't followed in this case. And finally, I'd make a note. The petition asked to have all of the money refunded. If y'all were to make, of course, a political decision that it was appropriate to refund money, we would ask that it not all be refunded, but that instead you take it back to the prior year's figure, whatever that was, so that they're not getting sort of a tax-free situation for twenty-twenty-two.
Don't have this listed as a public hearing, so.
No, it's not a public.
Discussion behind the board?
Yeah. This, this particular property, a joint's property that had the same issue last year. And very similar. And I, and I understand the statute regulating the appeal process, but this is a rather unique situation. But it would be, in my opinion, that we revert back to what the taxes would have been based off of the twenty-twenty-two value. I believe that's the date. And as he has paid in full.
And I agree.
And, and these are large, no, this isn't.
Not a small job.
This is not, you know, a household.
We've had a similar rule before.
Tax amount, which is substantial now, but yeah.
I would agree as well. Just following suit from what we've done last time. I think that would be proper in this case. And I, but I do agree also that there should be some taxes paid when they set off the year before.
For sure, for sure.
Since it wouldn't be a tax-free ordeal like they mentioned.
And I don't, I don't think that this particular property owner is not attempting to not pay taxes.
Right, yeah, I wouldn't think so.
Any stretch.
So alternative one is to deny the request. I guess would we can place an addition on that, that twenty-twenty-two values be paid?
Phil could make a motion.
Stephanie, do I have that right? Twenty-twenty-two values would be correct? Okay.
Based on the twenty-two value.
Yeah, I, I don't know that we have to do the math right now.
No, I wouldn't think so.
That would be, be my desire, and I would make that motion.
I'll second.
That was a motion to approve the motion, and a second by. to approve the motion and a second by Mr. Deloach. All in favor of the suggested motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Hearing no no's, it passes with no opposition.
So, Mr. Chairman, just as a point of clarification, the motion is to approve to refund.
Yeah, I wanted to get clear on that. That's why I was slowing down.
To refund based on. Less the amount based off of the taxes that would have been, that, that would have been owed based on the twenty twenty-two value.
Values. Perfect.
I could have done a better job formulating that. I'm sorry. Okay, that was sticky. Okay, number two in, let's see, actually, that'd be number three.
Yeah, row three.
In new business. It's also Mr. Groover, consideration to approve a proposal from special engineering to scan tax maps for preservation for historical information.
Yes, this is, we're asking to approve special engineering's quote to scan these tax maps for us before they fall completely afar, apart. This would be basically around twelve hundred tax maps, and I believe it's eight different tax map years that they would be scanning and cataloging hard copy maps for us. And that price is sixteen thousand, four hundred and seventy dollars for that. It would take a lot of man hours if we, we tried to do that ourselves.
Sounds like a no-brainer to me. If anybody has some comments, I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve as presented.
Second.
This motion to approve by Commissioner Kiefer, second by Commissioner Deloach. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Hearing no no's, it passes with no opposition. Number four is a consideration to approve the second rating of a budget ordinance and adoption of the fiscal year twenty-four, twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-five with Mr. Mark Barnes.
Good afternoon, Mark Barnes, Finance Director. Y'all do have, and y'all's packets up there, a brief presentation. And we're gonna run through this just real quick. It's gonna be a lot less in depth than the first reading. It's just gonna be a summary basically of what's changed from that reading to this one. Okay, so we're just gonna dive right into it. The, the general fund changes between the first reading and the second reading, there hasn't really been anything except for there were some two vacant positions in the solicitors' office that were budgeted for a partial year because they were vacant, but those have since been filled by the governor's appointment. So we've adjusted, a small adjustment to the general fund for those positions. They're now budgeted for the full fiscal year. There were no other changes in the general fund since the first reading in that regard. This is a recap of the general fund, and this is just kind of an item that was kind of mentioned during the first reading when we were going through it more in depth to kind of break out the operating expenses from the capital and the transfers. And we see down there at the bottom, we see kind of the year-to-year percentage change on those, which is, you know, basically aside from that slight adjustment to department three up top, these are the identical numbers to the presentation last time. Moving into the special funds, there were no changes in the special funds between the first and second. So those are pretty much identical to the, the more in-depth presentation we did a few weeks ago. And just to kind of reiterate, we did balance the budget this year is built around the rolled-back county MNO rate. This change on the top line, the county maintenance and operations, represents about a seven percent decrease. That number will change a little bit when the final digest comes in, but it's gonna be, it's gonna be right around there, which represents a decrease in the millage rate of about point four one four mils. And this is just a recap of the, the county maintenance and operation rates for Effingham County down here, kind of in the center of the chart, and the prior year MNO rate for some of the other counties. Just to kind of give a comparison of how that maintenance and operation rate compares to others in this region.
Isn't Glen County a little special? They had some special circumstances to.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, yeah, it's Glen County, because they have a county police force, does, has a separate millage, and of course, the sheriff's department for us is the largest, I'm sorry, he would kill me. The sheriff's office for the county is the largest single office code that we have expenditure, which is public safety. So, and also they charge EMS, which is maybe the, in the top three or four as, as expenses for the county as a separate millage. So it's not a true apples-to-apples. Glen does not include law enforcement or EMS in that number.
So if you added that together, would we have the best?
Absolutely.
Oh, that's good. So we've rolled back.
And I've had that argument with Mark that we should add those in there, but.
I just wanted to point that, I know we talked about it before, and I don't know if you've heard it or who's here tonight who hadn't, hadn't been privy to the rollbacks that we're gonna do again this year, but it's been three years in a row now?
Yes.
And we've rolled back the millage rate, the stuff that we can actually control. We don't control school board or anything else, but the MNO portion we do, and we've rolled that back three years in a row.
So part of what we're doing here tonight is we are setting the tax rate. That's what this body does. State law prohibits the taxing authority, which is the Board of Commissioners, to also assess the value of your property at the rate you're taxed. So tonight, we're setting the rate at which you're taxed. The Board of Assessors, they actually decide what the value of property is. So that's, that's not what we do. So just wanted to clarify that.
And we'll have a millage, a millage levy hearing too in the future, because that rate will slightly change as the digest kind of comes in, but.
Okay.
Okay, and that's all. This was just a very brief presentation tonight, because, you know, we went to the in-depth ones some weeks back, but if y'all have any questions, your comments, I'd like to.
This is not even setting the millage. This is just approving the budget.
Right.
Second reading.
But if y'all don't have anything, then staff recommends approval of the budget ordinance.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you.
There's no discussion. Can we entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the second reading of the budget.
Second.
It's a motion to approve by Mr. Deloach and a second by Mr. Floyd. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Hearing, all, any opposed, no. Hearing no no's, it passes with no, no opposition.
So to clarify what I just said, we just discussed what the millage rate will be voted on, and so when, what meeting is that gonna be? Will actually vote on that?
I think we worked out a schedule with Ms. Linda, so what was that?
We're hoping to do it in July this year if we can.
So we'll actually vote on that in July?
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Brings up number five, which is a public hearing. The planning board recommends denial of a request by Bryant Ligon as agent for TNT Nine G LLC to rezon, plus or minus two hundred and eighty-eight point three six acres located on Midland Road from AR one and I one to PDR to allow for residential development, map number three nine six, parcel number six two and six two alpha in the second district. This was denied in May of last year, May second. So to begin with, we'll open up a public hearing. Clerk is reminded, we have fifteen minutes for anyone to speak in favor, and we also have fifteen minutes to speak, for anyone speaking in denial of their request. So with that said, is anyone here that'd like to speak in favor of this request?
Well, does Chelsea need to speak first?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. Yeah, I got ahead if you didn't know Chelsea.
You're, nope, totally fine. So at the May second, twenty twenty-three Board of Commissioners meeting, the applicant was denied for the rezoning, and at that time, they had R three and R five for this parcel with a total number units of five hundred and forty-nine. The applicant is returning to request to rezone to planned development residential for single-family detached residential with a lower density of a maximum of four hundred and sixty-five units. The applicant, the applicant is proposing two single-family detached lot sizes. As you see on your staff report, the first is fifty feet by a hundred and twenty feet. That is consistent with our R five zoning. The second is thirty-seven feet by a hundred and twenty feet, so a little smaller than our R five zoning. The parcel does have significant wetlands and floodplain that run parallel in the center of the parcel, which you can see here on the screen. You can kind of see that center area. The rezoning is consistent with the future land use map. I'm gonna switch screens here to show you that, which these parcels are projected to be agricultural residential. Planning board did recommend denial, but staff is recommending approval.
The changes made, I want to ask this, the changes made from the time of the planning board meeting to now, those again are what, there's a reduction in number?
Yes, sir.
And town homes have been eliminated?
Yes, sir. They have also, and I'm gonna pull their planned development.
Everything's single-family homes, correct?
Yes, sir. Within their planned development, they are also proposing, and I'm trying to get it, get to it, I apologize. They are also proposing that no certificate of occupancy be given until the roundabouts are complete, until the parkway is completed. They are proposing to add a second culvert under Midland Road, no more than, again, that four hundred and sixty-five unit total, and no certificate of occupancies until emergency access is acquired.
Okay, thank you. Now we're gonna open up a public hearing. By the way, this is not my day job. We do it a few times a year when we're, we're vice chair, so we do our best.
Thank you all, commissioners. For the record, Josh Yellen here today on behalf of TNT Nine G, the applicant for the project. With us today, we do have Bryant Ligon, as mentioned.
Out of time, Josh.
That's all I got. Thank you all for the time. We also have with us Mr. Scott Allison from, from Coleman Company, the, the project engineer. So between the, the three of us, we can hopefully answer any questions that y'all have. I do, first and foremost, want to thank staff for the recommendation of approval for this project. As was mentioned, there have been significant changes both from twenty twenty-three until May and then even from May until now, and many of those had been highlighted by staff. First and foremost, and perhaps importantly, this was the elimination of all of the town homes that were gonna be on this project. This will be an exclusively single-family subdivision, and despite being four hundred and sixty-five units of single-family homes, the density on this site is incredibly low at two point six nine units per acre. Under the PDR standards, so this is a planned district residential under the Effingham County ordinance, so there aren't some tighter standards than what are approved for other residential developments. And so for here, under the PDR standards, thirty-four percent of the project is going to be reserved for open space. Twenty percent is required. We are providing thirty-four percent here, and that number is in fact even higher as to what's gonna be preserved and reserved as green space. Of this site, if you were to analyze it from a net acreage standpoint, up to sixty percent of the site is going to be preserved and undeveloped. And despite this site not having very many buildings and residences immediately adjacent to it, one of the other changes that the applicant has proposed is a fifty-foot buffer now surrounding the entirety of the project. This is an increase from what was previously proposed. The entrance to the facility, or to the facility, to the project has been widened to exceed the requirements of the Effingham County ordinance. As was mentioned by Chelsea, we are also agreeing to install a second culvert under Midland Road, which will benefit not only this project, but all projects in the vicinity. Amenities and outdoor spaces, as you can see on the plan that's before you, have all been prioritized. They've all been updated. Some of the updates include covered bus stops for school buses, the playgrounds, splash parks, wildlife outlooks, and very large open space has been provided. What you can see at the top of your screen is actually large enough to fit a regulation soccer field. So this site is going to be very green and highly amenitized. And so these reductions have been made, but they've also been committed to in the PDR text. They are baked into the zoning ordinance. They could not be changed unless an applicant came before you to petition for a variance or for a rezoning for this site. So we have the PDR standards. We have the control. And as was mentioned, we are also agreeing to not apply for, or to not obtain any certificates of occupancy until certain key conditions have been met. The three most important ones being the completion of the roundabouts on Midland, completion of Effingham Parkway, and completion of the emergency access to provide that secondary and emergency-only access to the site. So in, in summary, the applicant here has taken what I believe is already a very good project and has made it even better. They've changed the product type. They've committed to a cap on the number of units. They've increased the amenities. They've increased the green space, and they have locked all of this into the existing PDR text. And so we would.
I got one question.
Yes, sir.
So the buffer around this property is a fifty-foot undisturbed buffer?
Yes, I will confirm the undisturbed, but fifty feet, yes.
In the minimum or the maximum density, four, six, five?
Four, six, five, yes, sir. And so we would respectfully request that you approve of today's rezoning to PDR as has been recommended by staff, but we are here to answer any questions that you might have about the plan and about the, the changes. So thank you all for your time.
Thank you. Does anyone else like to speak in favor? Okay, with that, I'd like to move on and ask, would anybody speaking in opposition come forward, please?
Reset that.
Hold on one second. Let us get reset here.
Yeah, name Marty Secretary, live on Midland Road.
Hold on one second, Mr. Secretary. Go ahead, Mr. Secretary. Thank you.
Yes, I, I must be missed a vote or something, but what staff recommended the approval of this? And what, what staff would that be?
Yes, sir. So that is your planning and zoning staff.
Okay. Well, I got an article right here, and matter, matter of fact, it looks a lot like you, where you got a senior planner.
Yes, sir.
To protect, to protect the floodplains.
Yes, sir.
I wanna read what you say.
Yes, sir.
For our county to grow and to move forward, we need to make sure that we are protecting the floodplain, protecting the wetlands. And you are qualified to make sure that we are doing the right thing to protect these areas and keep the people safe.
Yes, sir.
Now, if, if all this blue in these maps, that's water, right? That's retention in ponds?
Yes, sir.
You got to dig that many retention in ponds that make this swamp land, which I know it is swamp land, to be able to build a house. Something's not right here. What happened when all them detention in ponds get full? Guess what? It's coming running on my land. That's all I got to say. This is a big joke. It ain't nothing but people coming in, won't make the money off us.
Done.
Hello, my name is Angela Richardson. I'm on Zipper Road, and I do have some questions as to what was discussed by the builder's representative, but I'm a teacher, so I didn't prepare a PowerPoint like the gentleman before me. So I've got the old-fashioned copy for you. I'm elementary, so it's the ABCs to consider before rezoning this, and there's something for every letter of the alphabet, even though X had to be E-X-I-T. But I moved here from Bluffton back in twenty sixteen, and if you've been to Bluffton lately, you know what it looks like over there. And when I first moved there, it was a very quiet, quaint, little town, little southern town that everybody dreamed of living in, and it started growing because everybody heard of it and everyone wanted to be there. It makes sense. That's how Effingham was. That's how I got here in twenty sixteen because I found out Effingham still had country and it was still one of those good old hometowns. So I came here and it took me, I lived in Laurel Mill at the time, and it took me eleven minutes to get from my house in Laurel Mill to I ninety-five to go to my school in Hardyville. I'm lucky to get onto thirty in eleven minutes now. Unfortunately, most of us that have jobs have to leave our house at a certain time. I leave an hour and a half early, so I either get to school early, an hour and a half early, and do some extra work, or or I sit in traffic. So I chose the lesser of the two evils and I leave early. But not everyone can do that if they have to take a child to daycare or anything like that. Um, I'm very happy to hear that we've got a buffer and that we're only doing single-family homes because in my ABCs, townhouses was a huge concern with everything that they're putting on thirty. The ones that they just put down at the high school that are going in, and the new ones which are Chatham County, which we can't do anything about, but unfortunately, us who travel thirty have to deal with all that traffic that's gonna dump out. When I left Bluffton, it was before they, I lived off of one seventy, and it was a little two-lane road with the beautiful live oaks hanging over. And they had so much growth that as I was leaving, they were making that into three lanes so that there was a suicide lane. However, after I moved, it ended up being five lanes and it still congested. But they planned, they tried. I did not feel safe pulling out of my subdivision at all. There's a lot of fatalities in Bluffton. Um, we're starting to see that in Effingham because of all the traffic that's on the roads. So all of my ABCs that I have have to do with a lot of different things, but I really feel that safety's the biggest concern. Um, I know it's Beaufort County, but they did put in a parkway. However, it's four lanes and it did help, but they have traffic lights at a lot of intersections. Um, they also made two seventy-eight, four lanes to six lanes, so that was good. But I feel like there's not been any changes with roads since I moved here in twenty sixteen. And I've seen so much growth like I did in Bluffton, but I, I was in Bluffton longer, so it, it took longer for that growth. I'm just here to ask you, please consider, I, I'm glad to hear they have another, or they have an emergency exit. I'm concerned if it's dumping out onto Midland Road as well, even though it's only emergency vehicles. It's, it's still, if it's during peak hours, it is a very rough time to get through there with it being two lanes. Um, I also would love to see another entrance and exit for the homes. With it being so many homes dumping onto Midland, if you leave, I invite you to come and sit where the subdivision is going during peak hours on a weekday, especially when school's in session. It's not the same in the summer. It's still bad, but it's not the same. But I encourage you, please come and look to see all, I mean, not, not everybody's gonna turn left, I get it, out of the subdivision, but the majority will. And it already backs up past that subdivision in the morning at certain times. So that is a huge concern. When the roundabout's in, it will be great for us coming off of Midland to get onto thirty. But then we're gonna have a roundabout down at Colic Henley and Hodgville, and we're never gonna get in because I see what the roundabout did to me on Bitten Boulevard. So I just ask you, please consider all the ABCs, but most importantly, um, please think about the safety. We should not be afraid to leave our home to go provide for our family, and that's a huge thing. Um, I would like to know where the emergency exit will be located. Is that going on Midland Road?
Let, let's let, uh, um, the other parties answer that, please. Emergency exit. I mean, she asked a question, so.
I just wanna know where it's dumping into.
Well, I'll, I'll allow some additional time.
So if you look at the, the south side of your plan, uh, we've coordinated with the fire chief and he says it satisfies his requirements. We would come out to Colic Hen, Helmy off of, uh, Harley. And, and that's, that, that would be the secondary access.
Dead front, elementary school.
And that, that, that is a secondary access for emergency vehicles.
Oh, yeah, thank you so much.
In the event that they can't get into the main entrance, it's blocked, you know, let's say something's going on, that would be the fire chief's secondary access point for emergency services. It wouldn't be a secondary access.
It's not on Midland, it's off of Colic Henley.
That's right.
Thank you. Go ahead, start back, please.
All right, my name's Chair Tipton. I have some land on Zipper paddock that I hope want to be building on, uh, and concerned about this subdivision. Uh, just a couple of math things. I guess we said that, uh, this met the R five requirements, but what I was looking at, the requirements were, they're like ten percent smaller. Even their biggest lot is ten percent smaller than the R five because the R five is sixty-six hundred square feet and this, this, their biggest lot is six thousand. So that's ten percent smaller, I believe. I think, I know, uh, previously at the planning board, they were asking for closer, uh, lot lines, like ten feet in between houses. I don't know if that was still in all these changes they made in the last month or so. But, uh, yeah, so it ends up their biggest lot is one-seventh of an acre. It's actually smaller than one-seventh of an acre. And they did do away with the townhouses, but it almost seems like they're just gonna make tiny homes because the smaller lot is less than one-tenth of an acre. So that's super small. Um, a, as Andy already said, there's still one entrance. That's why the planning, that's why I was denied last time, I believe. That's why the planning board's denied it, uh, two times before. Uh, there was mention that it was, um, that it was less dense, but it's more dense, but even on their calculations. Uh, I mean, it's five more units. There's no way to not be more dense. They added five more houses. It went from four sixty to four sixty-five. I mean, on the, on their, like, second sheet, it says it's two point six nine dwelling units.
Their original five forty-nine.
No, there, there was one in between that, uh, sorry, from the planning board, which y'all may not have seen. So, yeah, they added five. Since the planning board denied it because of too many houses going through one entrance, they've added five houses. I know they changed, they're not attached anymore, but they're basically even smaller houses, less than one-tenth of an acre. Um, and it's more dense. Like I said earlier, they said it met the R five requirements. From what I can tell, it doesn't, even their biggest lot, and it's actually more dense. Um, and like I said, uh, I think they're putting ten feet in between houses. I mean, they're welcome to say otherwise, but, uh, I, I believe that's what, I, I believe, I, I know on the planning board, uh, meeting, they, they were reducing the R five requirements from, I believe, fifteen feet in between houses to ten feet. If it wasn't that, it was twenty to fifteen. They, they, in other words, they're not even meeting the R five requirements, which is the most stringent, uh, detached dwelling unit, uh, requirement. So that's my main thing. Uh, planning board denied it, you know, twice, but even from when the planning board denied it, added five houses, this doesn't even meet the R five requirements, which I know they don't have to with the planning development. But, I mean, this is just super small. It's smaller than anything that we normally allow. I mean, basically, they could not meet the R five requirements, so they went with this. But, that's right.
About six minutes.
How y'all doing? My name's John Boston. Um, I'm gonna keep it short, give somebody else some time, but, uh, staff's told me before that PD development, there's no stipulations on rentals, correct? Is there any stipulations on rentals in a PD development? As the county used to have a thing, only twenty percent of a new development could have, uh, rentals for like five years. Is there any stipulations on a PD development? Could this whole thing be rental property?
Um, there's nothing within the ordinance that specifically prohibits that.
Okay, so it could all be rentals, possibly? Okay. And I've talked to some of y'all, and obviously, some of y'all think there's no traffic problems in Effingham. I don't know how that happens, but.
Next person, please.
Good afternoon, commissioners. My name is Shelley Payne. I live at forty-three twenty-nine Midland Road. My house is approximately three acres or three landlots from this development. The, I can, I agree with all of the sentiments earlier regarding, you know, the use of the land, the one entrance and exit from the land. The one thing that I would like to note, and all of us that live on our side, we all know a portion of our property is flood zone. They've put these water barriers in because of the flood problems with this property. It stays underwater. When we have hard rains, there's a good chunk of our property that can't even be used. And so I ask you to consider what this property is going to do if you allow all of these houses. This water is coming on to all of our neighbors' property. I don't care about the buffers that they're putting in. It's not gonna stop the floodwater from going on all of our properties and making it even more unusable. I would also like to just remind you that when they bought this property, they knew what they were buying it as. They were buying it as agricultural property. So it should remain the same. If not, I would then ask you to consider you've approved multiple subdivisions over there by our homes. One case in point is in your district, Mr. Floyd, the townhomes that are being built by South Effingham High School. Is there any harm in allowing what you've already approved to be finished and see how it's going to burden our resources, which the planning and zoning board previously noted that this plan was going to overrun our resources? Why not allow the current developments to finish and see how it's going to affect us before you approve another five hundred houses? I would just ask you to consider that. The other point that I would like to make is that our schools currently are at capacity. If you look at school choice for next year, current residents can't even send their kids to our schools that are zoned for this district because we are at capacity. Where are you sending these five hundred kids, assuming one child per household? What schools are they going to? Because they can't go to any of them that my kids currently attend. I would just ask you to consider that before you approve this. Thank you.
Thank you. Have time for perhaps one more, if somebody wants to speak.
Good evening, commissioners. My name's Clinton Watts. I'm here on behalf of my mother, Jacqueline Miller, that owns nine point eight acres that are joined this property, along with other properties right there on that back side. Between this property and that property, there has always been a wetlands in there. And that land has been nothing but completely swamp land back there. Because when we get heavy rains over there, and I'm going back thirty-five years, where that water comes through there, my mother has got a property on that property, and the next-door neighbor has a property with a pond there. It completely floods over both ponds. You cannot make it to the back two acres of the property as it is right now. Putting this in there, I don't care how much water they show around for retention ponds, it'll never hold. It'll never hold. And like I told Planning and Zoning the last time, one of the biggest things right here is when you rezone these properties, the one, the people that were sitting over here before were saying, well, we'll add the text later, later. Once you approve it, you've already committed to allowing them people to do that, no matter what. You may have to throw some changes in there. Why not make them do all the work, all the stuff, pay the county for it, so it doesn't raise our taxes on it? And then come here and tell you exactly what they know's gonna be able to be put there. Instead of costing everybody here, besides everything that I agree with, with the traffics, emergency exit coming right out in front of the school over there. Kids can't go to school hardly. I mean, just like they say, Forrest's trying to get out. If you try to get out on Colic Henley Road and Hodgville Road, somebody's gonna get killed right there. I can promise you. Not counting, they were talking about law enforcement and budgets y'all were talking about earlier. Maybe we need to have a whole lot more budget for police officers because I'm going down Hodgville and all these roads, thirty-five mile an hour zone where it goes through there, and these people that are moving in are coming through there, running fifty and sixty miles an hour, passing people on a double yellow line. You know, we need.
Let's, let's keep it to the, to the.
I'm just, I know, we just, we need.
I see it every morning.
I, I know that, but we need to take this in consideration on what's happening to the county. And just like the one lady said, before you guys approve something like this, let's sort of see what all these you've already passed. And that's all I got. Thank you.
With that, uh, I think we can close the public hearing right now and, um, discussion among the board, if we have any questions for anybody.
The flooding is an ongoing issue. I wanna hear from the engineers concerning the, you know, this concern with the water, all this water on your land. It sounds like it currently runs on to these folks' property. Is that in fact the case?
Yeah, I got the same concerns, and there's an additional culvert. What would be the purpose of that?
Yes, this is Scott Allison with Coleman Company. So we're in process right now for a FEMA flood study. Uh, this area is in what's called an A undetermined zone, so it's a special flood hazard area. But FEMA, when they did the maps, didn't say what the base flood elevation was. So we have to go through a study that has little or nothing to do with this proposed development. It has to study the flood conditions as they exist right now throughout that entire zone that FEMA has established, right? At the, at the end of that, FEMA, if they approve, um, they will determine based on the study what the base flood elevation is. Okay? And, um, we have, we cannot increase that base flood elevation. The ordinance wouldn't allow it, FEMA wouldn't allow it. Uh, in addition, the, the county's ordinance is our post-development stormwater cannot exceed what it is pre-development that leaves the site. Um, I know that flooding and drainage has been an issue for, um, throughout the, the discussions over time period of this project. And it was uncovered that there are some issues on Midland Road, um, in the right-of-way for drainage, and also that culvert that goes under. That's, uh, in, in our documentation to, to repair and fix that culvert and to maintain those. Um, we've gotta get it to drain properly in pre-development condition. Yes, there are a lot of ponds shown. It is, it is a conceptual site plan, um, for entitlement purposes. Um, when we get the flood study back and we get into full-on drainage design, the ponds may take different shape because we have to handle our stormwater and cannot discharge and exit our site with additional than what leaves it now.
Do you have an idea of when you'll have this study back?
It takes eighteen months from FEMA to get approval. We are almost complete to submit. So it's a strenuous process. We have to use, uh, outside consultants. There's subject matter experts, um, that only do these studies.
So you're gonna be able to start building until?
We wouldn't really even be able to start engineering design until we get that back. Um, we can do some preliminary in some of the areas, but you really need to know what you're having to do, what that base flood elevation is because you've got compensation to make up for. Uh, you cannot rise downstream. You cannot rise that, and even on your site, the base flood elevation.
Do you have any idea how much you could change this design when you get that back?
Um, really, the major.
This is based on a prior study?
No, th, th, this is based on just engineering standard for a percentage that you would assume in an, in an, in a special flood hazard area that you need to accommodate to handle stormwater on the site. Um, knowing the exact base flood elevation's gonna determine a lot to have to do with depths, outfall, things like that. Um, so, you know, what we've tried to do is, is not necessarily smoke and mirrors and not show a significant amount of ponds. Um, this is, you know, every, every nook and cranny that you can have that's not dedicated open space, okay? And the ponds only count for, per the, uh, PD, only fifty percent of that open space, same with the wetlands. Um, so, you know, we just wanted to go ahead and show that we've, we've put thoughtful consideration into handle the drainage and not show you guys something that really isn't fair.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, um, if this development is approved, they will have to come back and go through the preliminary plat process, um, which then you will see, um, that is more of that engineered, um, standard that has, uh, the flood study, the wetlands that are delineated, uh, per the core, so it will have that, um, exact information on it. So they will have to come back before.
There's no cord wetlands done as of yet, I thought. So the core has. So we know where the wetlands are.
Yes, the wetlands are locked. And, and what we'd be locked into with, with, with a PD zoning is we still have to meet that open space requirement. We still are capped at those number of lots. So, a, and, you know, the buffering and, and, and all, all of the stipulations and conditions that are in there, it just gets down into the engineering design. Uh, when we, when we will get through design, we would come back through with you guys at a level of, of comfort to show you in a preliminary plat, this is the number of lots we can actually get. We can't exceed.
This is just a visual representation. This isn't what we could eventually see.
We're hoping this is what you would see. So we would, we'd be, we'd be locked in. To be, to be, to be fair, to be fair.
Just trying to understand.
To be fair, the only, the only significant changes would be how we have to do these ponds. So we would still be locked into open space, these amenities, it's listed out in our PD.
So if the FEMA study come back negatively, you'd have to reduce your density? Is that what you're saying, or, or is it?
Yes, so.
Last thing I wanna see is a redesign. That, we've been down that road, we don't wanna do that.
It, it's less of a, a comeback negatively. It's gonna, gonna come back with clarity, right? We can make some assumptions based on existing elevations, you know, looking at the wetlands, looking downstream of what they, what they can. Exactly. This is, this is where we cannot increase the base flood level, right? It also establishes how we have to be, how much we have to be above for the finished floor for the homes, to protect those homes. The other thing to keep in mind, just real quick, I know I'm taking a little bit of time, is when you establish in an, in an undetermined A-zone, right? Your flood insurance is higher. So anyone within that A-zone is paying a little bit more than if it was in an, if it, if it was in an AE, which is, the E is for establish. Because then at that point, you can get an elevation certificate and shoot, okay, my finished floor is X number above the base flood that FEMA's determined. finished floor is X number above the base flood that FEMA's determined. And your insurance goes down.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else have any more questions?
I know there's other ones.
Oh, you want, you want comments from us now?
Um, I, I'll, it's okay, I'll start that, and then you guys can piggyback on.
There was a question, I want to clear, just get clarity on the emergency exit, because it sounds like there's some concern there's going to be a lot of traffic in that. I don't know, is it a true emergency? I just want to understand that and make sure we all understand it.
Yes, sir. With the emergency access, this was done in consultation with city staff and fire. And so this would be a gated entrance solely for emergency access. It would not be any form of otherwise vehicular access, simply in the case of emergencies. And I believe they're all outfitted with the access codes so that EMS and fire are able to access it. Exactly.
Chelsea, is that conditioned in here, the emergency exit?
Um, it, it will be, it's not currently on your staff report. They have placed it within their PD text under the conditions.
So they wouldn't be able to move forward unless that's done?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Correct. It was listed that we could not get a certificate of occupancy unless that was.
Okay, so there's a link to that.
Correct.
I have another question before you go away. The mention with tiny homes, so these lots are small, what's the average square footage you're thinking you'll be building? This is common in Florida, my daughter lives in Florida, they live on small lots with big houses, but I'm just curious, are these actually small homes or these average homes? What are we thinking?
So, Bryant Ligon, yeah, so you're probably looking somewhere between 1,200 and 1,400 square feet. So, yes, it is the idea and concept of creating something that's, that's attainable for, you know, a, a, a married couple, a single teacher, something like that, that is not a townhouse. It was pretty, pretty apparent that planning board not appreciate the townhouse concept, and the folks probably didn't either. So, yes, you're starting to see more and more of that from the builders, to, to be able to accomplish as land values increase, is providing that attainability for, for homeowners.
Thank you. So I'll, I'll change that, I'll, I'll go last, if it's okay with you guys, if you have any comments. Said I'll go last, if that's okay, you guys have any comments? What you thinking, any more questions?
I just had those few questions. Go ahead.
Two concerns I have is, one, one is, is drainage as well. I do, I do share that concern. So my thought process on this, I, I know the, depending on how the FEMA map comes back, density can change, but I'm basing mine off of 461 units. And I rode down Midland Road yesterday, and I'm not a road expert, but in my opinion, that's a pretty tall road bed. And the reason is, is those, the people that built that road knew that was a wet area in the county. So they have to build it up that high so there's not issues later on. So that, that's one concern that I have. Second of all is 461 units. I know they're not going to be built at one time, but that's a two-lane road. I know the roundabout's going in, but that's a roundabout at intersection of Midland and 30. We, we have not even had any kind of discussions on road infrastructure improvements in that area. I voted for developments on Hodgville and Goshen. We have improvements, funding approved, designs done, we'll be starting on those very soon. But again, I go back to the fact of, on Midland Road, we haven't even had a discussion, even in a workshop. And, I mean, as you guys know, it, it takes a while to get things done. I mean, even, even if you do have the funds. So drainage and traffic is, is definitely a concern of mine.
I want to say one more thing. I did speak with my pointy on the, I said, one more, I said, I want to make one more point. I did speak with the person on the planning board, and with these adjustments, losing the townhomes, the increased buffers, their vote would be in favor on this. But my concern today is the, I'm curious, I wish we had this other study done. The, the, so we, I mean, I came in.
Is that typical on that? I, I, I'm not familiar with the FEMA study and how that plays into that. Is that typical to have to wait on that for so long?
I don't want to get in a situation where we're shown this, and then something changes dramatically that, and that's my biggest concern to, and I, this all just came to light tonight.
Under, hold on a second, Mr. Chairman.
I mean, I, one thing that you can take in consideration is that while we're, while we're looking at a site plan, because it is part of a PD, this pro, they, the actual site plan still has to come back in front of you.
Right.
Right? So if that deviates, traditionally, if it's like a traditional R zoning, if it's, if the, if the lot count doesn't go down, is, doesn't go up, and the open space doesn't decline, we, we can approve that administratively. This still has to go in front of you once all of that final flight, that preliminary site plan is ready to be presented. That is post the, the FEMA review.
This boils back, so this is just a rezoning?
Correct.
Not an approval of a site plan? Okay.
Which, which I like, because I don't, I want to see, I'd like to see it, some, exactly what they're, where they're going to build it. And I think we've worked hard in that area. This is tough, because there's a lot of different viewpoints you can take on this. I live in the area, I see it every day. Mr. Floyd's made comments many times, you can go around, you can go out of your house at 9:00 AM and go anywhere in the county. And he's right. We, our big traffic problems are early in the morning. One thing that I think we're going to see for the first time ever is a traffic pattern change. And that helps me be more on board with this. And why I say that is we've got Hyundai, we've got Seaweed, which is 600 employees. We're not going to be the same community that, that supports Gulfstream, and that's it. We're not going to be the same community that only has a place to go to work in Savannah. We're going to start seeing some people go the other way. So you're going to see some traffic pattern, believe it or not, you will. It's going to change. Another issue I, I have a hard time getting past is the housing cost in this county. Right now, I looked a couple of weeks ago at a starter home with, that it was 1,100 square feet, was almost $300,000. My kids can't afford that. My kids can't go to school and come back and do that. It may be, and you're probably not going to like it, but I think our kids and our grandkids deserve a place to, to live. I think first-year teachers need a place to go, and right now, we don't have it. We've got some stuff planned and it's coming, but it's not a lot. There's developments bigger than our entire county and other counties right now. We're not approving 10,000 homes here and there, like I've seen in some other places. This is, this is big for us, and it's 400.
Mr. Burdette, there's 3,000.
You can't speak, hold on, please. Let me finish.
In that five-mile radius?
No, we don't. That's not in that five-mile radius.
And our schools are already overpacked.
I, I've actually met with Yancy last Monday, and he's okay with this. So we do, every time we do this, we, I consult with the school board. This is not something I'm doing blindly or take lightly, believe me.
The teachers don't care to say anything.
The, the facts are the facts.
But we're, we're not going to keep interrupting.
Yeah, the public hearing's closed. Would you please let me finish? I've had a lot of concerned people and a lot of things being raised, and they've handled everything that has been raised. They have added to the drainage when they didn't have to. The extra culvert is an extra expense that will actually help things, according to engineers. I know everybody didn't believe that, but it's true, and they're trying. Been working on this a lot, and I have talked with planning board as well, and they would approve it as it is today. That's not hearsay or speculation. Some of the other areas that, that was a big concern of mine, we, we disapproved this last year. I don't know if you guys remember it, but, but we did. There's also something else I'd like to see in there if I move forward with this, and that's a vinyl thickness. I like it higher grade. I know we spoke about that. Max density, the culvert, the entrance wide, any, the buffers are great. A lot of this stuff is really, really good. It's a nice place to live. It's, it's, it's not five acres, I live on, I know everybody likes that, but that maybe not, that's not going to be our future. We're not going to divide this county up into five-acre lots and, and move there, because you can't afford it anymore. People can't afford it anymore. My kids can't afford that, go, go to school and come back here and live at this, what we have right now. I know you don't agree with that, and I'm sorry, but I don't know any other way to put it. I was concerned with emergency exit, that was a big thing for planning. The planning board, they've got that fixed. And I've made notes about what everybody has said tonight, and with everything that was said, I, I don't see how we could deny it. They've, they've, they've checked every box, they really have. And it may not go, I may get voted, but I think, I think we need more, we need more homes. We need more smaller homes. We need nice neighborhoods. There's also two bus stops in this thing, I don't know if y'all have looked at it?
We got one.
And, and we're going to need more bus stops. You know, right now, we have an ordinance, and I spoke with the school board about this last, last week, that requires the, or not an ordinance, but a policy, the buses can't go to individual homes anymore. So what we're looking at doing is hopefully getting, then put covered bus stops in all the areas, so the kids don't have to stand out in the rain. They've offered to put two in there, around the bend. They're really trying to be accommodating, and I'm hoping, as a board, we'll be able to move forward and tackle some of that. We already require residential mailboxes be grouped and clustered, that'd be a great spot to start putting some kind of shelter for our kids, so they can catch the bus. But, that's all I have to say. I'll, I'll make a motion, and we'll see where it goes. I'll make a motion to approve the staffing board and planning recommendations in all conditions that we've listed.
If, if you would like to move, I don't, I don't know that we can require improved architectural standards, but.
Well, I guess they would, would they have to agree to that?
Well, they, they would have to, i- if that's something you wanted to look at, that would be important to me.
I definitely want to keep the quality if we're going to do it. That would be a big thing.
Not, not overbearing, you know, because, I mean, everybody deserves a home, but.
Yes, sir.
I've seen things throughout this county that.
Me too. That was a concern, that, how would we handle that part of it?
Mr. Chairman, so within their PD text, they do have what is consistent with the R5 ordinance, they do have those architectural standards listed to include if there is any type of vinyl siding on the home, they have to choose specific types. And I can read those to you. They even specifically talk about, you know, the elevation of, you know, the front side of the home, and, you know, if there are, you know, windows, and, and on the side, it can't just be, it has to have windows, it can't just be plain. So there are specific architectural standards within the PD text.
Is it a roof overhang?
Um, let me, let me double check for you.
That's one of my big ones.
12-inch?
So, and I heard someone say 12 inches, I don't think that's, so a minimum 12-inch roof overhang. And I do have, if you'd like to look at it.
So I know one of the planning board's issues was with the thickness of that, is why I was asking about that, so I want to make sure we address it in some way. Otherwise.
Currently in there is .4.
.4, 4 millimeters?
.4.
.4.
You okay with .44?
Yeah.
Did we keep the wider road for parking?
And I'm not an expert in that, but from what I gather from an engineer, that's higher quality than your normal vinyl siding, as we'd say. I'm not a builder either, but.
And again, yes, sir, so they do have the vinyl thicker than .40 millimeters, and then, in addition, anytime vinyl siding is used, the front elevation must contain a minimum of two vinyl siding profiles from the list below.
The other one.
And, yep, they have, they have seven different types, clapboard, Dutch lap, beaded, vertical, shig vinyl siding, shingle, and scallop vinyl siding, and log siding. So those are what they specifically.
I will say one more thing on the COs. A CO, if you don't know, is a certificate of occupancy. The way this is listed right now, they cannot get a certificate of occupancy until the parkway's built, until the roundabout's built. So we have improvements before you have a rooftop. And that's something that they put in writing, and I've had no other developer do that. So if something happens along the way, and for some reason this doesn't get done, it will delay it. And that's pretty bold. But I thought that was the most important thing for us to have some improvements in place before we did this, before we issue, before we start having rooftops. We need them, we just need to figure out how to do it right. My, I guess my motion's on the, on, on the floor.
It includes those stipulations you mentioned?
Go ahead.
They, they are a part of it, including the emergency access acquisition?
Correct.
In the text?
It's in the text, yes.
It is.
Okay. I'll make a second to approve based on the, I understand that the FEMA study will have control, the final control of what this sketch plan will look like, number of homes, to ensure that flooding shouldn't be an issue.
Okay, please outline these stipulations.
I've written them all over the place, as everybody was speaking. Some of it's already in there.
Okay, the ones that's not?
I don't, I don't know if there's anything that's not in the text.
So it's based on stats and recommendations?
From what I've heard, correct. Recommendations and stated, and Mr. Yellen stated that. Will the statements follow through that are here tonight? Has been made? Or is that, do I need to make that a condition?
It has to be a part of your motion.
Okay.
So he wants these conditions?
If I make that part of the motion, that will add a condition, which there will be no second reading. Correct. All right, can I go through these real quick, so I make sure I don't miss anything?
We have, we want, want Chelsea to read out the four.
Please, that would be very, very helpful, and I'll, I'll make any notes of what we're missing, because I know I've written down so much stuff.
Perfect. So these are the ones that are within the, the PDR text, and so no COs until roundabout is complete. No COs until parkway is complete, adding a second culvert under Midland Road, no more than 465 units total, no COs until emergency ac- access is acquired, and then Commissioner Floyd added the condition of the FEMA study being completed.
Before?
Before site plan.
Before site plan, yes.
So that would be, that would be an added condition, then?
Yes, that one would be added.
Preliminary plat?
Yes, preliminary plat.
Did we keep the road parking?
I'm not sure.
I was making sure they did eliminate it. We haven't seen a plat yet.
Yeah.
That's a, that's a situation where I'm not, I'm not PD. Haven't, haven't seen a plat yet, or whatever.
I'm sorry for taking so much time, but I want to be thorough here. There was another question from the planning board on the width of the entrance. It's going to be 14 feet versus 12.
I haven't seen a plat yet.
Okay, we can stipulate that. We're stipulating anyway, so my, it's going to delay it no matter what.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes, sir.
Y'all seem to be making a big deal about putting an extra coal pipe on Midland Road, when it's three pieces of pipe, they can go two miles down the road and get it from Allen Zipper and bring it back, put it in. You act like they giving us some piece of gold or something. That ain't nothing to that.
But I think addressing our, please, please. I think addressing the concern is what I was concerned with, not so much if they're spending a million dollars to do it, but do they care enough to even do something about it? We've had in the past, people, they don't care enough to even address our concerns or keep. We've had in the past people, they don't care enough to even address our concerns or even care about what we want to do. To me, this is a good change in the right direction. And it's something I haven't experienced yet, which I appreciate. 14 foot lane. So the culverts are in there. Forty mils in there already.
Yes, it is.
That's in the part of it. Wetlands have been delineated. Cap on, cap on 465?
Yes. That is, yes, sir. That is what's in there.
Cap is in there. Never had anybody cap density before. They roll the dice. If they can do more, they do more. They're cap and density. No, you might not have to. FEMA study comes back and you can squeeze 10 more in there. We've seen it. That would be, that would be the two added ones in addition to everything else we've had.
And Mr. Chairman, we just want to make sure that the applicant is, um, okay with those.
Would somebody come to the, the mic and, and okay the, the two added stipulations, if you're okay with that?
Yes, sir. We'd be okay with this.
Okay, thank you.
Most of those are in the document, I think. Yeah, there was a few that.
Should I withdraw my motion and redo the motion? Okay. Just add to the motion. Okay, I'd like to add to that motion. Two additional conditions, uh, the FEMA study being complete, uh, before we see a site plan finalization. And, uh, the 14 foot, um, width of the entrances, which is extended from 12. So we'll have more room there, plus of our, our emergency exit. So that would be a motion approved by Mr. Burdette and a second by Mr. Floyd. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All as opposed, no.
Nay.
And it carries. But that's gonna negate having a second reading. That was Commissioner DeLoach, not in favor of that.
We'll not have a second reading, right?
Yeah, no second reading. So that will move us on to number seven. Yeah. Okay, if we could continue, please. Uh, number seven, it's consideration to approve a memorandum of agreement between Effingham County, Georgia, and Montgomery County, Georgia, and a tile for an emergency evacuation shelter.
Good evening, Clint Hodges, EMA Director. Since, for the past few years, we've been working on updating, um, our statewide evacuation plan. And one of the challenges was, um, making sure we have a specific location for, um, people who are transportation dependent. So what we've done is initially, we were partnered with Emmanuel County. Um, we've recently updated that to Montgomery County. So Bruton Parker College would be the location if we entered into the, this agreement with GMA and American Red Cross and DPH.
Any discussion for the board, or can I get a motion, please?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
It's a motion to approve by Mr. DeLoach, second by Mr. Floyd. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Hearing no no's, it passes with no opposition. Brings up number eight. It's a site plan. The planning board recommends approval with conditions for an application by Chad Zitterer, I've run it, butchered that name, Kern and Company, for a site plan located on Old Augusta, Augusta Road South for Pro Grade South, is on B3, map number 475. Parcels number 58B in the 5th District.
Yes, Mr. Vice Chair Samantha Easton Planner, too. This applicant is applying for the site plan approval for Pro Grade South. The rezoning was approved in 2013. The applicant is proposing one office building with an attached maintenance shop and a fuel depot behind the maintenance shop. As well as, um, screen storage for mulch stockpiling area. The 2013 had a condition of the buffers that did require a 50-foot buffer on the southeast property line, which the applicant is showing. The applicant is proposing a 30-foot vegetated buffer on the north and east property lines and a 10-foot to the west to run parallel to Old Augusta. Which does adhere to the 2023 adopted buffer ordinance. A site plan does, no longer goes to planning board, so staff recommends alternative number one. And the applicant is here if you have any questions.
And this is just a new way of doing things, right?
Yes, sir.
Because it used to be sketch plan.
Yeah, yeah. So there's no, there'll be buildings that there's not any on the plat yet, or?
So there are, um, two, a small building.
I see it, I see it, okay.
And I have a.
I was looking at it earlier, I couldn't find it.
I have a printed copy if you'd like to see it.
We've always known it.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
But the applicant is here if you have any questions.
I don't have any. Entertainer motion?
Make a motion to approve the site plan as presented.
Second.
It's a motion by Commissioner Kiefer, second by Commissioner DeLoach. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Hearing no no's, it passes with no opposition.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Number nine, consideration to approve a limited warranty deed to accept an elevated tank site located at the Georgia International Trade Center.
Mr. Chair, members of the commissioners. There's a water tank and a point two five, oh, Steve Kamler, sorry. 2.55 acre parcel underneath the water tank being dedicated to the county, located at 2006 WT Trade Center Boulevard. EOM and County Jonathan and myself have both inspected the elevated water tank and the parcel and found both being in compliance with our standards. Um, and then, um, the, um, attorney has been given the deed. And if it's fine with him, I'm, I'm, that's not my expertise in any fashion.
It's approved as the form.
I've looked into it as well. I think we're already operating it, aren't we?
Correct.
I thought so.
Yeah, it just, it just was, it's all part of the PD agreement between us and KITC. It just had yet to be turned over.
Yes, and now we're just basically on the property that it's on.
Right.
Did you climb to the top?
It's county engineer job. And then, so we just recommend alternative one. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a motion or any more discussion?
Make a motion to approve alternative one.
Second.
It's a motion by Commissioner DeLoach and a second by Commissioner Floyd. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Hearing no no's, it passes with no opposition. It'll bring us to number 10. Uh, it's a job description. Consideration to approve and publish a job description for a special events coordinator for the Recreation Department. Ms. Sarah, always smiling.
Yes, yes. Good evening, gentlemen. Sarah Mouseoff, Director of Human Resources and Risk Management. Short, sweet, simple tonight, just asking for approval of, uh, two new job titles. Well, we'll start with first recreation, I'm sorry. Um, programs, special events coordinator. So basically, we all know that the county is growing, um, our rec services, our numbers are up every year, which is a good thing, right? But, um, staff, we need some help, um, and we'd like to have a position to focus on doing more special events and coordinating that and overseeing, um, some of the part-time staff that we do have. So this would just be in addition to helping Mr. Jeffrey and Ms. Shalane, who's the office manager.
I mean, you're talking about things like fishing, rodeos, that type of thing?
Yes. Yeah, just so we can kind of give back and do more. Um, we're hearing a lot of that from, you know, the new constituents and residents, yeah, we need to do more, so.
And, and this was included in the budget you just approved?
Yeah.
Not that they can't multitask, if, if, you know.
Well, the numbers, I mean, are showing that, yeah. Everything's going up, each sport and, and definitely just our community events. Like they do the Santa breakfast, uh, we did the Halloween event, the trunk or treat, so everything keeps going up.
Is this to also promote possible ball tournaments and things to bring other revenues into the county?
To help, yeah. And, and definitely focus on getting the word out, so that's why they're gonna be the programmer and, and definitely do a lot more with the, you know, kind of work with Mark to get that information out.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other discussion, or can we entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
It's a motion to approve by Mr. Loach and a second by Mr. Kiefer. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Here, uh, any opposed, no. Hearing no no's, it passes with no opposition. And this one's Ms. Sarah as well. Number 11, consideration to approve and publish a new job description and title for a community planner and land use planning analyst.
Yes, so these two new job descriptions and titles are gonna be for development services. So basically, this community planner, uh, is gonna be a position upgrade, so a promotion for our current planner, um, if it is approved. And then, uh, they also were put into the budget earlier. And then the land use planning analyst, we're kind of gonna switch our fire inspector, um, and move her over into a new role, so. Not necessarily increasing headcount, but again, just kind of giving her some new duties and responsibilities, so we need a new title.
So she'll still be fire inspector as well?
No, sir. Um, that's gonna transition over to the inspector side, our deputy building official, Mr. Joshua Moody, who's working on his certifications as we speak.
He actually passed the test for the fire inspector.
Fire Inspector One, yes.
Does he get a badge?
I, I think the marshal will get a badge.
He's gonna need like a whole Letterman jacket, you know? He's got everything, yeah.
Great, thank you.
And I mean, you guys see it. I mean, everything that comes before this board is coming through development services, you know, from permits to commercial, residential, industrial. It's all, this department is vital to us.
That's right. Thank you.
Yes.
Any, any other discussion, or can we entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve both positions, or job description for both positions.
Second.
It's a motion to approve by Mr. Loach, a second by Mr. Floyd. Uh, all in favor, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Hearing no no's, it passes with no opposition.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Moving on to number 12. Uh, consideration to approve contract 23, uh, dash RFP dash 059, emergency transportation for disaster evacuation with Wind Transportation Holdings LLC. You don't remind Danielle.
Uh, Clint Hodges, EMA Director. So this is actually a piece of the shelter, uh, agreement from earlier. Previously, in the event we had to evacuate people who could not evacuate themselves, we would be reliant on basically school buses and either staff internally that can drive them or bus drivers from the school. Uh, the issue with that is, you know, in a, if we're issuing a mandatory evacuation, those people are also probably going to evacuate themselves. So, um, what we did was issue a request for proposals for, uh, companies that could come in and actually handle that for us. In the event we did have to execute it, it's gonna be a mandatory evacuation. More than likely, it's gonna be a federal disaster anyway, which would open us back up to reimbursement for it.
Like hurricanes or anything large?
Pretty mu- it's pretty much hurricane only.
What's a paratransit vehicle? I think I know.
It's just a smaller, kind of like the CRC buses.
Thank you, sir. Any discussion or a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve by Mr. Loach and a second by Mr. Kiefer. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Hearing no no's, it passes with no opposition. Number 13, consideration to approve a proposal with ACCG for the fiscal year 2025, ACCG dash IRMA renewal. Irma.
I'm gonna fill in for Danielle tonight.
Thought she ran for the heels.
Yeah, uh, for, for her and Ms. Allison. They're both out of town. All right, so let me see. So tonight, um, what we are asking is for our renewal with ACCG. I'm sure you guys have their official staff report in front of you, but also I just wanted to let, add some side information, because we did have multiple meetings. We reached out to Eric Horton of Chatham Insurance, which was recently, um, acquired Hub International. So one of the larger insurance companies in the state, um, and globally. They sent out an RFP and we actually had travelers decline to give us a quote. Selective was not interested because we had a jail. Cincinnati not interested just because of our auto exposure, so they cited our emergency vehicles, which as you guys know, is more than half of our fleet. First responders, which we have to provide those services. Liberty Mutual was not interested in quoting, but they said they would think about revisiting us in a year. Munich also declined, and then Trident declined, um, just stating they were not doing new business at this time. So by that broker, his recommendation was hopefully the market will change in six months and we can revisit and take a look. He did let us know it is tough in Georgia, because as you can see, there's only about five that will really issue to municipalities. Unfortunately, you know, mostly what we deal with is first responders, public safety. So statistically speaking, those vehicles are out on the roads more, right? They're more prone to maybe being in an accident or involved in something. When I talked with ACCG, uh, Mr. Joe Dan Thompson, who's been coordinating with our clerk as well, we, we had a very frank conversation, and he told me some of the counties who left last year when they increased, they're coming back this year. So either they got dropped and refused to renew for, with the new carrier, or they just realized that maybe it was better to stay with ACCG. So with them, from the HR standpoint, I mean, we get all kinds of free training. There's a legal hotline, which me and Lee have utilized before in the past. Um, so they do provide a lot to staff. And I'm just here, um, Mark, we met with some people purchasing. We've been in meetings with them. We've given updates to Tim, so if you guys had any questions from that side, you know, but we are gonna try and revisit this in about six months and, and see maybe if the market hopefully has changed.
We got, we're going through just one broker, or we're going several brokers?
We've reached out to two right now, yeah. But again, we can't shop too many, because then word gets out and, yeah.
You have to try to find somebody on a different market to go into, or it's not even worth while.
Or they start getting all these quotes from Effingham and it looks bad, you know, so, yeah.
Some do have better relationships with them than others, but.
But I thought it was good to hear from ACCG that, you know, people are coming back, so.
It is good.
Yeah.
Any other discussion or a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
It's a motion to approve by Mr. Loach and a second by Mr. Floyd. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Hearing no no's, it passes with no opposition.
Thank you.
Thank you. Number 14 is a consideration to approve to renew the fire services agreement with the City of Springfield.
Yes, sir. Clint Hodges, uh, fire chief this time, uh, standing in for Danielle. This is basically just a continuation of the agreement that was initially entered into in 2015 with the City of Springfield for Fire Services, just like Gaithlin.
Yeah, yeah. Is there a motion?
Make a motion to approve the agreement.
Second.
It's a motion approved by Mr. Loach, second by Mr. Floyd. Uh, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Hearing no no's, it passes with no opposition. And number 15, consideration to approve to renew the intergovernmental agreement between Effingham County School District, Effingham County BOC and Effingham County Sheriff's Office for fiscal year 25.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thi- this is the annual renewal of the agreement that we have with the Board of Commissioners, the Sheriff's Office, and the Board of Education with regards to the funding the, um, student resource officers. Hasn't changed, although the, the values have changed obviously with, uh, with pay increases, but, uh, the share hasn't changed with the Board of Education handling 75% and the Board of Commission, uh, the remaining 25%. Staff recommends alternative one.
Motion or any discussion?
Make a motion to approve alternative one.
Second.
It's a motion to approve by Mr. Floyd, a second by Mr. DeLoach. Uh, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Hearing no no's, it passes with no opposition. Number 16, consideration to approve a proposal from Forsyte Group for the development of a bicycle and pedestrian plan.
Uh, Mr. Chair Jonathan Holm, county engineer. This proposal is, uh, from Forsyte Group. It's for the development of the bike and pedestrian plan. This, this plan really is about. It's for the development of the bike and pedestrian plan. Um, this, this plan really is about looking at, um, connecting, you know, different, uh, modes of transportation between, uh, you know, the different schools, parks, um, cities, um, and providing, you know, a safe, uh, way, you know, for bike and pedestrian. Um, this plan will look at our existing conditions. It'll include community outreach. Um, they'll also look at, um, overall, uh, vision for how we want, you know, the bike and pedestrian, uh, you know, routes to be incorporated. Um, they'll also make recommendations for different networks and then, uh, also an implementation plan for how we wanna, you know, implement this, this master plan. Um, also again, design guidelines and then, uh, it'll also have a plan associated with it. Um, staff is recommending, uh, alternative one, uh, for approval. I'm here for any questions that you might have.
This is the same firm that was, is doing the Safe Streets for all?
It is, uh, yes, sir. Yep. This is, this is kinda stimulating from that.
Yeah, that's what I thought of, coming from that, because we, it was revealed that we had a lot of accidents that actually involved pedestrians and bicyclists.
That's right. Um, so this plan would kinda stimi-, you know, come from that, um, plan, but it's separate, so.
Yeah, that's great.
And hopefully angle to some federal, for some federal dollars.
That's right.
Yeah, they did mention that in that presentation as well.
Yep.
Is there any more discussion or can we entertain a motion?
Make a motion to approve as presented.
Second.
It's a motion to approve by Mr. Kiefer, a second by Mr. Floyd. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Hearing no, no's, it passes with no opposition. Number 17, uh, consideration to purchase, to approve a purchase order 23 dash RFQ dash zero five six with Harrison Contracting for exterior painting at the CEM complex.
Seth Sandler, uh, Director of Parks, uh, this is, has been bid out and basically it's painting all the red iron at Clarence Morgan Park that has flaked off the paint. Uh, this will be primed and sealed so the paint sticks this time and keep our park real nice, so.
Surprising. This is fast. Is it on the inside?
Oh, exterior.
Oh, exterior.
Yeah.
Any discussion or a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve by Mr. Loach, a second by Mr. Floyd. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. Hearing no, no's, it passes with no opposition. Number 18, consideration to approve the renewal of the agreement with Tarheel Medical Billing, DBA Collington Software Incorporated for EMS billing services.
Good afternoon. Mark Barnes, Finance Director, stepping in for Danielle. Uh, this is the contract that we've had for multiple years now. This company handles the medical billing. The, uh, terms of the contract this year are pretty much the same as they've been in previous years. We are charged 5.69% of, uh, collections and that's been the case for the past probably five years that we've had them. And, um, this contract is good for a year and of course it can be terminated, uh, at any time with 90 days written notice. Staff recommends alternative number one to approve, uh, the renewal of this contract.
Can we entertain a motion or discussion?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion approved by Mr. Loach, a second by Mr. Kiefer. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Hearing no, no's, it passes with no opposition.
Thank you.
Number 19, consideration to approve a proposal from Platinum Paving and Concrete for Grayson Road.
Uh, yes, sir. Jonathan Holm, county engineer, stepping in for Danielle Carver. Um, this is a proposal from Platinum Paving, uh, Concrete for Grayson Road. Um, it'll look to, uh, you know, smooth out, um, that road that just previously got paved. Um, it'll also, um, extend to tie in, um, to both adjoining roads. Um, it'll also include restriping and, uh, some shoulder repair as well that is gonna be associated with this. Um, staff is recommending alternative number one.
So, Mr. Chairman, just a few comments on this. Um, I wanna make a certain public comment. Um, to say I'm irritated about this is an extreme, um, understatement. Um, we're gonna have Thomas and Hutton oversee this portion of this. Um, there's nothing structurally wrong with the road, but the rideability is, is terrible. Um, there are some humps on the road. Uh, the specs for this include shaving down, um, the humps. They will add another layer of asphalt, um, which in theory is supposed to smooth out the road. I've had some citizens ask me, um, you know, they were hoping that, you know, we would not have to write a check for this, but we cannot go back on the warranty bond because there's nothing wrong structurally. So the rideabil- there was two parts of the road they did have to tear out and patch. So they did fix the structural issues. So I know it will be very much appreciated, um, in, in this area, um, if we can help improve that. Um, the contractor has worked with us and they're doing this at cost. Um, the owner, um, of the company actually went out and met with Tim on the road. Um, there were some issues, as Jonathan said, they did not tie in on either end on Old Louisville or 17. Um, so that will be done. So hopefully this will be a corrected issue for us.
Just a different contractor, I'm guessing?
It's the same contractor, but, um, it, it'll be some different team members this time.
It, it, and I would say the issue really was the, um, uh, the design spec, uh, that was, um, uh, put forth to how they, how they, uh, how they resurface and reclaim the road. Uh, it, uh, it basically created a, a, a sub base that, uh, that was kind of a very wavy and bumpy. Uh, and it also, uh, the spec that provided did not work in two or two of the areas. It was to mix it with cement and those two areas had to be, um, as Commissioner Loach mentioned, replaced. So they did it per-
This was the nice version.
Yeah, they did it per spec, uh, but unfortunately the spec, uh, was not, um, uh, was not something we would do again.
We're gonna change it where we, we measure the work on, on, um, the rideability or have some kind of standard of what we expect, we're expecting there.
Well, yeah, and I, I think we did, we are changing who we, uh, uh, who, who we basically have design our specs, uh, as well. Um, we've got, uh, Thomas and Hutton doing that now, who, who essentially the former district director for GDOT is doing it for them. Um, so these, these more experimental type, uh, uh, proposals um, are not going to be, um, uh, recommended from this point on.
Gotcha.
Any other comments?
I'll make a motion to approve the proposal.
I'll second.
Motion to approve by Mr. Loach, a second by Mr. Floyd. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Hearing no, no's, it passes with no opposition.
Jamie, you need to ride down the road once completed before we pay him.
And number 20, consideration to approve a proposal from JAT Consulting Services Incorporated and Momentum for Financial Processes Review.
Sure. Um, the, uh, staff reached out to our financial advisor, uh, Davenport, uh, just to, for some recommendations of some firms that we can come in, uh, who've got a lot of experience in government, uh, financing, uh, and accounting and, uh, policies and procedures and come in and, uh, look at our department to really determine, uh, how we can structure it so we can grow further. Uh, right now, uh, as many of you know, Mark is, um, uh, works very hard, works very long hours and we wanna be able to make sure we have the right people in place. We have the right policies in place who are running as efficiently as possible, uh, with, and doing our due diligence and, and protecting. So we reached out to two firms and interviewed two firms. Uh, the one that we chose, uh, was actually a, uh, two former, uh, finance directors. I think one from Cobb and one from, uh, the former manager of Winder County, I mean, Wi-, uh, City of Winder.
Winder.
Um, and, um, uh, we felt that theirs, um, uh, did a little bit better job specializing, um, in their experience with finance and financial policies. Uh, so they will go in there, take a look, make some recommendations and then they will, uh, those will be presented to you all.
Sounds good. Sounds good.
Uh, staff is recommending alternative one.
Any discussion by the board or a motion?
Make a motion to approve alternative one.
Second.
It's a motion to approve by Mr. Loach, a second by Mr. Kiefer to approve. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Hearing no, no's, it passes with no opposition. Number 21, consideration to approve resolution number zero two four dash zero two zero pertaining condemnation for Staffordshire Drainage Use.
Yes, uh, Mr. Chairman, so, um, I know we've been discussing this for years, uh, but, um, part of, what'd I say?
I said, yeah.
Yes. So, uh, part of, um, the redesign to try and address the, uh, the drainage issues in Staffordshire, uh, there are two components to this. Um, one of them is to, uh, when the, when the next phase comes in to increase, uh, and connect, um, the, increase the size of the ponds, uh, in that new phase and connect them to the existing. Uh, the other is to create an outfall, uh, that can get to, um, Blue Jay and thus the, um, uh, the necessary, uh, wetlands outfall for the, um, uh, for the region. So, uh, this pertains to getting from the development to, um, to, uh, to Blue Jay. Um, we've, you know, but, uh, tried to work, uh, with the, um, with the property owner, but it just didn't work out and we have to take down, uh, we, we do have to move forward with this, so we are recommending approval.
I've got personal knowledge of this as well, been involved with it for quite some time and, um, we need to do something for the current residents. This is not for future stuff. This is for the people there now. They're having a lot of issues. Uh, with that said, is there any more discussion or can we entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Motion to approve by Mr. Loach and a second by Mr. Floyd to approve. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Hearing no, no's, it passes with no opposition. Did you guys wanna go ahead and do Commissioner, I mean, Commissioner's administrative staff and?
Yeah, I do have a, just a, a quick thing. I spoke with, uh, Commissioner Kiefer, uh, regarding, uh, an update on the traffic light at 21 in McCall. Uh, was recent an accident there yesterday. Uh, and so, uh, if, um, this has been going on for a while. We've been, um, we had lobbied, um, and requested a signal warrant there. Um, we were finally, uh, awarded and, uh, that warrant, uh, and there was a car share agreement that went in front of you in November. Uh, one of the things we've been negotiating with, uh, GDOT on to speed up the process of it, uh, is to have the county take over, um, the entire process and just have them reimburse us. Uh, they have asked that we, uh, that we do the necessary design uh, and right away acquisition to create two left turn lanes on each side of McCall, on, on each side of 21 in McCall. Uh, we got those preliminary plans back on Friday. Um, we're sending comments back, uh, this week. Uh, and, uh, we are, um, we are not going to tie this, uh, with one contract with the roundabout at, um, at McCall and Courthouse, uh, because that right away acquisition is going to take additional time. Uh, so in order to move this ahead a little bit more quickly, we're gonna, uh, we're gonna treat this as a separate project as soon as, uh, GDOT approves.
Sounds good, especially in light of what has just happened to our community.
Will that design have to go to GDOT for approval?
Yes, it does. Yeah.
But it'll have to be complete before it goes to them or?
That, that, that's right. And so they, they're going through our comments right now. And once they're, once they address our comments, which essentially we envision will be GDOT's comments since the division director is actua-, the former division director is, is actually the one creating the comments.
Yeah.
Um, hopefully there won't be, um, um, mu- many comments from GDOT and then we can just simply move forward.
But it is absolutely at the top of our priority list, right?
That's right.
Okay. I knew it was, but it's...
And, and this is, as a matter of fact, a T-SPOs funded, uh, the one that was funded in November. Uh, that, this was a project on that list, so it's funded as well. And that's all I have.
Yeah. Thank you for updating on that.
Yeah, thank you. Anything else from staff?
A quick, um, Ms. Pauline Shaw with the Navigators on Thursday delivered. You guys each had a box. Um, so it is a coffee mug from them and a new bracelet. So she just wanted to thank you guys for your continued support.
Appreciate what they're doing.
Yes.
Um, just a couple reminders. Um, on July 18th at 6:00 PM is the dinner with City of Rincon Staff and Council. That will be here. Um, your EOM monthly report for the month of May was emailed to you earlier. And reminder to mark your calendars for the strategic planning retreat. Thursday, August 15th is a travel day. The retreat will, um, go all day on Friday, the 16th, and a half a day on Saturday. That's, that's all I have.
So it ends on Saturday?
Yes.
What was that date again?
August 15th through the 17th.
Any other staff? Commissioner Floyd?
I don't have anything tonight.
I've got some, but I didn't know if Commissioner Loach wanted to cover that with, uh, or you wanna hold it for another time?
Yeah, I can, I can bring that up.
Okay. I'll pass it on to you then.
Okay. Um, Roger and I met with one of his constituents yesterday afternoon at the intersection of, um, golly, Hodgsville and Scuffletown. And it's where they're putting the turn lane in going right. And the lady we met with, she, she has just asked, because the, the edge of the turn lane is, I mean, it's within five feet of her backyard fence. She just asked, was there a way to put a guardrail up? Um, that was really her, her only request. I've never, I've never had anybody ask that. It is close to her backyard fence. Um, so...
Jonathan, look at it.
Okay. Okay, I, I can give you her address.
It's right, right there on the corner.
So...
You'll see it.
The other thing I had was, um, wanted to follow up with you about the City of Guyton. Um, do you think we could do, um, the Mayor Andy Harville reached out to me, um, last week and would like to look at, um, getting into our inter-, enterprise fleet program. Um, he, he reached out to them, but they have a minimum of 20 vehicles. The City of Guyton would not need anywhere near that. So he has asked if there was a way we could have some type of intergovernmental agreement, um, with the county, they would be able to get what they need. And, you know, they'd be able to participate and get the vehicles they need, so.
Sure. And so, um, I'm having Danielle, who's out this week, uh, call up Enterprise. I know we are looking into doing this for the Department of Public Health, um, uh, on their trucks. Um, it might be, and that will actually include maintenance, um, emerg-, uh, public safety vehicles don't, but we just have to kinda work out that details with them. But I imagine if we can do it for them, if we could do it for DPH, we could do it for Guyton and, like you said, just simply set up a, uh, intergovernmental agreement between the two entities.
Okay. That's all I have.
Yes, sir.
Um, I don't have much. Um, I was gonna bring up the Transportation Advisory Board. I, um, I know the, the chairman is typically a member of that. I just wanna look at, you know, well, how is it functioning? How can we make it better? Um, I think, you know, a lot of, which is good information now. It, I think DOT kinda updates the members, but it kinda didn't go anywhere and have no, no direction, I guess. And, and I think we could utilize that more.
Had the same complaint with one of the members there, that really nothing is getting done, just more of an informative...
Yeah, just something we can work on along the way and try to find a good role for, for that to...
Yeah, and I think, I, 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 I agree with you on that. I mean, it becomes just basically a report from me that kind of tells everyone what's going on in the county. Recently, we have reached out to the cities to see if we can get some, you know, kinda local reports from them as well.
Participating? I know they're a member or they're...
They, they, they are now. Um, and so, uh, we, uh, recently we, there's been an uptick in participation, so.
Good.
Um, you know, hopefully if we can maybe get some, maybe set it up more as a, um, uh, uh, kind of a, a workshop, you know, where you kinda share information versus, you know, versus a presentation, that might be, uh, uh, that might work a little bit better. But, yeah, I, I, I agree. I mean, I make the presentation and, you know, generally there's not much question, so.
Yeah.
Um, you know, it would be, it would be good if, uh, we have a lot of, uh, elected officials there, a lot of, uh, local leaders. It'd be good to get some work in.
And I don't know what, what, I know we, I, I know of two, you know, citizen members that we have. I don't know if any of them... we have, I don't know if we need to expand that, possibly try to, you know, get a better cross-section of, of concerns.
Sure, what we might wanna try and do is also include the bike and pedestrian folks as well, and so we can, we can look at expanding that list as well.
Yeah, I'm not, you know, calling for a wholesale change today, but just looking for ways to make it more functioning. Other than that, I attended, I see Mr. Long out here, I attended the groundbreaking for the Cure House, that was a great event. It's gonna do great things.
That's good. That would be it, we do have need for executive session, so I would say, if you're okay with everyone, we'll take a quick five-minute break and then go into executive session.
Do we wanna announce that? Do we wanna do the executive session announcement for?
We gotta vote to go into executive session.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Is that what you meant, Tim?
Yes.
Okay.
We got a motion to vote, do we?
All right, let's, farce.
Let me back up on that.
Hit your gavel.
Excuse me.
We just gotta make a motion to go in executive.
The guy here needs to make a, a formal, make this formal, so, do I have a motion to go into executive session?
I make a motion to go into executive session, executive session to discuss personnel property and pending litigation.
That's a motion by Commissioner Kiefer, and a second by Commissioner Floyd, and we're going into executive session.
Vote, we gotta vote.
Oh, sorry. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All, any opposed, no. Hearing no noes, we're going into executive session.